Good.
All right, good morning. I would like to call this meeting of the City of Findlay City Planning Commission meeting to order at nine oh eight. We apologize for the technical delay. To begin the meeting, we will proceed with roll call.
Eric Mearon.
Here.
Mr. Martin.
Here.
Mr. Darmut.
Here.
Ms. Schroeder.
Here.
And Mr. Klinger.
Here.
Wonderful. At this time, anyone planning to speak for or against an item, if you can please stand and raise your right hand to be sworn in.
All right. Do you affirm that all the testimony and evidence you're about to give in a case before this commission this day will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, and will conform to the facts of the case and the rules of this commission? This you affirm under the pains and penalties of perjury? Please say aye.
Thank you. You may be seated. Approval of the Thursday, June fifteenth, twenty twenty-three City Planning Commission meeting minutes. Do I have a motion to approve as circulated?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Nay. Minutes are approved. Moving on to new items. Application for conditional use CU dash eleven dash twenty twenty-three filed by Ben and Courtney Dutcher for mixed-use commercial residential at six fourteen Lima Avenue. CPC staff comments.
This request is located at the northeast corner of the intersection of Lima Avenue and Western Avenue. It is Zone C two general commercial to the north. It is also Zone C two general commercial. To the east, there's neighborhood of R three small lot residential. And to the south and west, it's Zone I two heavy industrial. The City of Findlay Land Use Plan designates the area as neighborhood commercial. The site has been vacant since the Dairy Queen closed at the site. The applicant would like to convert this old Dairy Queen property into a mixed-use commercial residential structure. They would have commercial on the first floor with an apartment on the second. The proposed commercial tenant would be a coffee shop. The residential unit on the second floor would not exceed fifty percent of the building square footage as prescribed in the zoning code. The parking lot can accommodate twenty vehicles, which is well over the required amount for C two. There would not be any additional lighting planned for the building. The applicant stated that the ingress into the second story unit would be through the stairs at the rear of the building, and they plan to reconstruct those as part of the renovations. In terms of renovations to the building, they would be doing some exterior work to the second story to put in exterior dormer windows. The applicant also plans to paint the structure to have it not look like that Dairy Queen. Staff would recommend that the exterior work be approved by HRPC as part of the review process, and the applicant did send a few. Matt was showing you, but they had some preliminary sketches of what it would look like, and then those are some images of what the coffee shop would kind of, the vibe of the coffee shop would be like. So staff recommendation, staff recommends approval of application for conditional use. A CU dash eleven dash twenty twenty-three filed by Ben and Courtney Dutcher for mixed-use commercial residential at six fourteen Lima Avenue with the following condition: approval of the elevations by HRPC.
Engineering?
No comment.
Fire prevention?
No comment.
The recommendation before the committee is staff recommends approval of the application for conditional use CU dash eleven dash twenty twenty-three filed by Ben and Courtney Dutcher for mixed-use commercial residential at six fourteen Lima Avenue with the condition of approval of the elevations from Hancock Regional Planning Commission. Would the applicant like to come forward and talk a little bit about your project? If you wouldn't mind, just come forward and talk about any additional information that might be pertinent to our decision.
And real quick, staff had a question on the coffee shop. I saw in the plans that you designated an outdoor seating area. We were curious if there was plans for a drive-thru for the coffee shop as well.
Can you turn your microphone on? Just push the button there.
Hello?
Thank you.
Yeah, and I planned on putting a barrier between the patio and the drive-thru, but that's only if the coffee shop wanted to keep a drive-thru.
Just for their knowledge in the future, the drive-thru would have to come through Planning Commission to be reestablished since it's been past the two-year mark.
Okay.
Since it's been used.
So when you said conditional approval by that committee, what steps do we got to take next?
It would be the same. They would have to apply for conditional use.
Okay.
So personally, I really like this. Obviously, this is a high-traffic area, but, you know, been a vacant building sitting here for quite a while, so I think that this would be an improvement to the area.
Where are you thinking?
One of my questions, so you talked about the outdoor.
It would go pretty much past that vestibule door, all the way around to the backside where the current steps are, and then there would be an additional door on that side for, you know, so they didn't have to walk all the way around front if they could go to the bathroom or order something else.
Okay. Is there any, obviously, I know right now, the, pretty much the entire parcel is covered with blacktop. Is there any plans to remove any of that and add any sort of greenery or landscaping to the property?
Yeah, probably pavers and then like raised planters.
Okay.
And then, just like Chipotle has, just tables with umbrellas, something like that.
Okay. What is the yellow here? This is?
That would be the proposed patio area.
Well, we see a site plan again, Matt, or this is, this is, what's the process here on this one?
With the drive-thru, so we would not see a site plan, I mean, for the conditional use. This, this is the review.
Okay, right, I understand. So for the drive-thru would require a site plan or not necessarily?
It would require a site plan. We have to show the stacking and movement and things like that, yeah.
Okay. The only other comment I had would, just an enclosure around the garbage dumpster is, I think, is a requirement, isn't it?
Right.
Okay.
And we talked to Chris Keller. She doesn't even know who that dumpster belongs to, so that would probably be removed.
Okay, but you're going to have a dumpster for your business, though, won't you?
Yes.
Okay, all right, okay.
But we don't own the property yet. We wanted the approval before we, you know, I didn't want to spend money on an architect and all that stuff, and it's not my property.
No, I appreciate the investment. I mean, and I, I agree with the, the need for some landscaping, just some greenery and, you know, take some of the pavement out, and I think it'd look nice.
And there's no good coffee on that side of town.
Yeah, I know. I think, I think a drive-thru would do well. I mean, I think that'd be, I think that would be good, so.
That's what we thought.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The issue with the drive-thru is, obviously, is on the west side, and you can exit right out on the Lima or Western Avenue there at that intersection, or you can kind of come around the front of the building. So it's a, it's a little awkward from the standpoint of the traffic flow. Would you have, at this point, I don't suppose you have any anticipations of relocating the drive-thru portion of it?
I think I would close off the south side, so they would have to go on the western. They can't cut across over to Lima.
Yeah, I'm not sure which is the lesser of two evils there.
Well, if they go right, then there's a body shop, so if they hit somebody.
So, you know, obviously, that's not pertinent really for today's conversation. That would really be the business discussion, and then if you wanted to come back, I would just encourage you, if you do start a conversation around the drive-thru before you come back here, to talk to engineering so that they can give recommendations. Obviously, that is an awkward spot, but we all know that it, you know, has worked in the past. We would just want to make sure that we're trying to limit conflict points, especially coming out that close to a, to an intersection.
Yeah.
Do you know how many square foot are in the first floor plan there?
It's just over nine hundred square feet.
Matt is here.
Twenty-four by forty.
Oh, twenty-four by forty. Now, you can, have to have less than fifty percent of the second floor apartment, I think. Does that meet the apartment requirements then, too?
Have you thought about, I know you included some pictures. Have you thought about what color you're going to be painting things?
That's on my wife. I'm not allowed to pick colors.
Would the roof be changing color, do you know?
Yes.
Okay.
And we will be adding landscaping back to your comment.
Okay, great, thank you.
Perhaps some beautiful flowers? Dutcher Flower Farm. Was there anyone else in the audience that wanted to speak for or against this item? Any other comments?
Eric.
Eric. So one other thing, this will have to go through Wood County for your apartment above, so you will have to submit plans to them for the remodel.
Okay.
And I think also, since it's been vacant for over two years, that, that also applies.
Did you say Wood County?
Yeah, they handle our commercial building code, and because this is a mixed-use site, that will go through that review.
All right. Based off of the discussion, I will make a motion to approve the application for conditional use CU dash eleven dash twenty twenty-three filed by Ben and Courtney Dutcher for mixed-use commercial residential at six fourteen Lima Avenue with the conditions of approval of the elevations from HRPC, an enclosure for the dumpster, and then just a note of the Wood County permits.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none. Jacob, whenever you're ready.
Mayor Mearon.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Darmut.
Aye.
Ms. Schroeder.
Aye.
Mr. Klinger.
Aye.
Thank you.
Should we leave him, Tom?
Thanks.
Yeah, you can. That's fine.
Thanks.
Moving on to item number two. Application for conditional use CU dash twelve dash twenty twenty-three filed by Elizabeth Baldridge to allow welding in the building located at parcel six zero 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 one zero 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 seven four oh at the corner of Olney Avenue and Morocco Boulevard. CPC staff comments.
So this request is located at the southwest intersection of Olney Avenue and Morocco Boulevard. It is Zone C two general commercial, located in a neighborhood of R three small lot residential along Lima Avenue to the south. There is some C two general commercial. It is not located with a hundred-year floodplain, and the City of Findlay Land Use Plan designates parcel as neighborhood commercial. According to the Otter's website, the garage was constructed in nineteen eighty-two and had been previously used for storage. The applicant has requested a conditional use to allow a welder to occupy, I said one, but I believe it's two of the tenant spaces in the building. The new owners have started to advertise the space as commercial since they acquired the site last year. Staff has concerns that while the parcel is Zone C two general commercial, the use would have negative impacts on the surrounding neighborhood. There's no paved off-street parking at the site. Neighbors have noted that semi trucks have been parking along Olney Avenue, which is a narrow road. The Otter lists the building at twenty-six hundred square feet, which would mean it would be required to provide seven parking spaces. Staff also recommends no work be conducted outside of the enclosed space. While there's commercial properties on Lima, the area to the north and west are residential in nature, staff would like to see some landscaping or fencing to help screen from the, the residential to the west from the commercial activity. We would also recommend a limit on hours of operation to Monday to Friday from eight AM to five PM to reduce any additional impact on the neighborhood. So staff recommendation, CPC staff recommends approval of the application for conditional use CU dash twelve dash twenty twenty-three filed by Elizabeth Baldridge to allow a welder in the building located at parcel number six zero 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 one zero 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 seven four zero at the corner of Olney Avenue and Morocco Boulevard with the following conditions: add screening along the west side of the parcel abutting residential, provide a parking area to accommodate seven off-street parking spaces, hours of operation restricted to eight AM to five PM Monday to Friday, and all welding work must be done inside the building.
Engineering?
No comment.
Fire prevention?
We'd like to make sure they contact us to set up a fire inspection once they get done or close to the end of the project, as well as pull all the proper permits for any work that's being done to the property.
Thank you. So the staff recommendation is approval of the application for conditional use CU dash twelve dash twenty twenty-three filed by Elizabeth Baldridge to allow welding in the building located at parcel six zero 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 one zero 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 seven four oh at the corner of Olney Avenue and Morocco Boulevard with the following conditions: add screening along the west side of the parcel abutting residential, provide parking area to accommodate seven off-street parking spots, limit hours of operation to eight AM to five PM Monday through Friday, and all welding work must be done in the enclosed space. Is the applicant here to speak on this item? If you could, please come forward and introduce yourself, and then tell us a little bit about this request.
My name is Elizabeth Baldridge, and my sister and I purchased the property from my mother, just to fix it up a little bit, roof, get a new roof, clean it out. Then we rented it, and he was just going to be doing a little bit of welding work from the building. Yeah, so.
I'm sorry, can you, what, what did you say?
She's welding work and automotive. Yeah, so.
Okay, so, so it's like minor auto repairs, or explain that a little bit more to me?
I believe he's just doing some welding work and automotive work.
Okay, so about how many vehicles does he have on the property at a time?
Just his personal and maybe one other person's. It's not like, he's not like
Running a business where people would be coming.
Dropping cars off, and like, he's not rotating cars in and out. It's more of a welding situation.
Okay. I think I can help with this. So I used to work with Greg Cornet for lots of years. We go way back, and he's a friend of mine, so I was going to abstain from this one, but I would like to comment on it. So, so it's just a weld shop. He doesn't do body work, and he, he'll, he'll stretch trailers kind of things, but just primarily welding is what he does.
He's, it's not going to be customers coming in and out and that kind of thing. On the seven parking, there is, there was a parking lot where that red truck is. Just over the years, the, not being up kept, so if we can get that top layer off, there should be a good four slots there. Also, on the other side of the building, there was a stone parking area, so if we can get the, you know, the grass that's grown over and everything that's come up over time, that we believe we can get the seven spots in there.
Where, where is the second location you talked about?
Okay, see the, where the red truck is?
Man, there's a pointer.
And there's a border.
Here's one.
Pointer, yeah.
There you go. See the border here, and then it goes all the way out and around, and then it, there's a garage door back here behind this. See where that is? And it goes all the way up there and then around. And then all that was at one time, over the years, I believe it was concrete. On the other side of the building, where it's more of an office area, that all was stoned at one point. The place actually started out being a car lot in the nineteen forties, so at one time, there was paving all the way around it. It's just a matter of getting to it.
So it was paved before? The issue here is, it's, it needs to be paved parking. I, there is.
I don't know. Once we get down in, in there, we'll, you know, have to see. I believe it's paved, but where the tree is on the one side, and we have a good four, four spots there. I do believe on the other side, it was.
Stoned.
Whatever was underneath the stone or where of it started, I'm not sure, but I know my father had put stone in there at one point, in somewhere around the nineties.
Okay, but what he's also saying, it needs to be a hard surface paving, yeah.
Yes, I understand.
And I doubt if there's anything that good under there at this point.
Right, yeah, yeah. I think we'll find good where that tree is on that side with four, and then we'll have to really address what is, what we can do on the other side. Also, I was, wanted, I was curious about, there is pavement here at the large garage door bay. This right here, is that Morocco?
Yeah.
Okay, then that's Morocco, and we could probably get a couple spots there also.
Matt, what's the setback for the parking? Ten foot? Or?
It's ten feet, yeah. But this, I mean, this is the property line. Now, the Otter, it's shifted, it's shifted a couple feet this way. One of the challenges is, you know, there's no, you have to have the parking on the site, and so, you know.
Yeah, and these property lines, excuse me, have changed five or six times in the past forty years that we know of. Even when we were in the process of purchasing it from my mother, they couldn't give us a good address. We have zero Morocco, we have one thousand Morocco. At one point, one of the addresses was off of Olney, so.
Well, I mean.
Those property lines have changed.
But, so every street has right-of-way, city right-of-way, so, you know, the, you know, this grass is in the city right-of-way. Even, I mean, this is the latest, this is an accurate portrayal of the property lines, other than it's, it's probably about two feet shifted this way.
You're talking about that because it goes right through the.
Yeah, so it's, so this building is probably right, you know, it's very close to the right-of-way.
So we can't have any parking there? Is that what you're telling me?
No, so the, the, the seven parking spaces would have to fit within this red box.
Okay.
Is the, the seven parking spaces negotiable? Can we limit it to one side?
Yeah, because we're not using one, the other side. Greg is using, was it nine hundred square feet, a little over nine hundred square feet. I forget the dimensions on what Greg is using. All the other parts of this building and around are ours, are empty.
Okay.
So he will have right-of-way from that garage door to come through to his side here where this big bay is, the big, big garage door.
And if he's, yeah, if he's got it open, he's just doing airflow through the, through the building.
So this, this part here is empty, this is empty. Actually, our, our overflow of all of our stuff, so we're using it also, but just for personal storage.
Can you speak to the neighbors' concerns that, that semis are parked here and that?
That was one time, and it's not, it's not occurring again. It was just, he had had somebody come that couldn't leave, and so they sat the truck there overnight, but he said that is not going to be typical at all if it ever even happens again, so.
Yeah, he was just doing, loading an oversized load or something like that, and it was just, yeah, overnight, is how he explained it to me, so.
He builds oversized pieces that from time to time, flatbeds will come and pick up.
Yeah.
They won't be parking there, but they might be there for a couple hours while they're loading it out.
He got a wonderful opportunity to do rings for the.
Windmills.
Yes, thank you, and so.
So, obviously, we kind of went through the condition that staff is recommending. Do you think that those are other, we can talk a little bit more about the parking, but the, the landscape screening?
Yeah, absolutely.
And limiting the hours of operation. Do you think that those are achievable?
Yes, ma'am.
From my standpoint, you know, definitely have concerns about it in the neighborhood, but I think that it would be relatively limited. You know, I would prefer that the doors be closed, you know, to kind of keep, keep it contained and less disruptive to the neighborhood. From the parking standpoint, I guess I, you know, kind of preferential to keeping it limited parking. You know, I, I understand the standard and needed to, to make sure that there is appropriate parking, to make sure that they are parking in actual parking, not just in the grass. But I think trying to fit too many spots on this property would actually be more disruptive than trying to keep it greenery.
I absolutely agree.
So I would be more, you know, prefer, you know, trying to just to maybe have the four spots that are more able to be accommodated.
That, and we can make it look, have it fit in more as residential, so it's not like a big concrete building.
Right.
Spend a lot of time and money.
Making it look better.
Making it look nice and.
Yeah, definitely has improved over, over the last couple of years, so I appreciate that.
My opinion is, as a conditional use, you can set, you can state the number of parking spaces. And then one challenge, you know, one challenge with the fencing is, we have some awkward property lines.
Yes.
You know, property line like this would actually be preferred, and that actually, I mean, I believe, I believe this is a Habitat home. We could maybe assist in reaching out to Habitat, see if there's interest in fixing this property line.
Oh, that's interesting, yeah.
I mean, to a more natural property line. There, there could be discussion. There may be no interest, but as it stands, your fence would be this, this angular fence, and maybe that, that's, that works out. But I'd be willing to set up a discussion with Habitat about maybe a swap to fix those property lines.
I was also told that we could do maybe like.
Shrubbery.
Shrubbery or trees or.
That way, it would look a little more residential and kind of help. You know, if I was living next door to it, I'd rather see trees than a big old fence or.
And there can definitely be discussion about that. Sometimes shrubbery, you know, sometimes it takes five, ten years for shrubbery to be effective, you know, for it to grow and to actually be a nice, so that, that's one of the downsides of it.
We could buy bigger ones.
The bigger ones, the price tag increases exponentially.
So is a fence.
Yeah.
Matt, for what it's worth, I talked to a couple of neighbors who were out there the other night. So there's a, I talked to a couple right here, and they didn't have any problem. They, they were very supportive of it. And then this guy right here in this driveway, he was out working on his boat and his, and his wife, and I went on talking. And they were very supportive of, you know, their operation didn't, you know, even the weekend work, and they were, I was surprised. I mean, they were, they were good with it, so.
They've been our neighbors for a long time.
I guess, I'm curious, is there anyone here wishing to speak upon this item in the audience? Okay.
And just.
Thank you, thank you.
As she's coming down. So in terms of neighbor feedback, the neighbor immediately to the south. immediately to the south, I believe, is the one who emailed me saying that they were fine with it, that they hadn't noticed any real, um, impact, and the guy was, um, very respectful and-
And which neighbor was this, please?
I believe it was, yeah, that one right there.
Oh, that one right there, okay.
Um, but I did receive an email, um, from, um, the lady who's coming down, um, and she has talked with, it's the West Park Block Watch, and, um, they've had some concerns about the semi trucks and the potential, um, impact on the neighborhood, so.
If you'd like to come forward and if you could please introduce yourself and provide your address and then speak on this item.
Hello, I'm Robin Welly. I live behind the house, or behind the garage, the Olney's there, and then there's a big yard that my brother owns, and then I own the next yard, property behind it.
Can you point to where you're, where you live?
Um, what I do, just press a button?
Yeah. No, the, on the side.
Oh, I see it, okay. Okay, so that's, uh, I really-
That's the Hellmann's.
There's Hellmann's, there's my brother's house, and I live right there where that, you can't see, that's probably the back of my shed, right there.
Okay, very good.
Okay? It says that this was not even made until 1974. 50 years ago, my first car came out of that building. There was a car lot there in 1975. I have a sentimental attachment to that building. The people in that building at this point have been nothing but nice, considerate, and quiet, but there are concerns. First of all, this whole parcel went from one owner, and now we have seven owners on this parcel. We now have a bar and the apartments, we have a, I don't know if it's a duplex or a triplex, we have the girls that own the building, and we have four Habitat houses.
I'm sorry, what parcel are you referring to?
The whole block, the whole thing there.
At one time, it was owned by our parents.
Okay.
That's, I think, that's why we use property line on that.
That's why the property line was, because they, when they, Judy didn't give up the garage, so they had to make, they had to section that off to make it a property, is what happened. She sold everything, but she didn't sell that, that's how that came. The, um, this is not my personal opinion, this is concerns. After the yellow sign went up, we'd already had our block watch meeting, we talked to the other neighbors around there, evident, I know that one wrote in, not everybody wrote in, um, the neighbor you're talking about with the boat that lives in the parsonage right there by the house, he, they're good neighbors, they're, they're good owners, we have no problems with the owners or the things, but if, the building is divided up into three things, they've got one rented out as a storage unit, the back part where the garage door is on Olney, where the dumpster sits, that's a storage unit that the guy with the boat owns, that he rents that out, so he's already got his storage stuff in there.
No, the guy with the boat-
Oh, well Wes has, Wes rents from you.
Wes did not rent from us.
Okay, well, I guess that the lady lied to me then, I guess Mary Haunt, the, the haunts that lives in the church, she told me that they rent the back part of the building-
Well, at one time, he is no longer a tenant.
Okay, so as of Sunday, he's no longer a tenant, because she told me this, actually, she called him Monday and told me that.
Actually, he hasn't paid, so.
Okay, well, so we have another unit, the building's advertised as three parcels inside, to rent out as three things. One was a rental, as they said, he hasn't paid, so evidently he's getting evicted, which comes up our thing. What happens when they rent that to the Frito-Lay guy who comes and goes to get his merchandise at all hours, like the other storage units out throughout town? Throughout town, I know over there, off Lesnar, uh, some of them storage units are rented by companies where they can go in and get their products in and out, and they have traffic in and out. I guess our concern is, um, there is a garage door right on front where he can enter with one vehicle in on Moracle Boulevard, you can drive in, you can pull your truck in there, and you can work on your truck, but the, he, what he's welding on has been very large projects, there's been one overnight, at least one overnight thing part there, but there's cut, there's semis that come in to deliver steel. That road is so skinny, two cars can barely pass now. We went from three houses on there to 10 houses on that street now, and the street has never been upgraded. The semis do come there to deliver, it's not only pulling into our neighborhood, but it's pulling out of our neighborhood, the semis, that's part of our concern. Um, and for him to get, the gentleman right there said, he works on large stuff, for him to get his large stuff in there, he has to use the garage doors on Olney Avenue, that, that's how he uses, that's how he uses and brings his stuff in and out is through Olney Avenue. So, I guess our concern is, the recommendations by, that's on that sheet today, far exceed what we have asked, we're going to ask for, far exceeded. Um, we are concerned about the mud on the road, we've already had issues with mud on the road, the city has addressed it with the Habitat houses, because they're crammed in there and barely have parking spaces, so we had them parking in the thing, I guess that if that's addressed, we have no problem with that. I guess that the storage unit, when, like I said, it's advertised as three businesses in there, and we have a concern why we're only addressing just the welding business, why the other is not put in that, you know, I understand he's running two of the three, but why we're only addressing one.
Well, he's not running, he's only running the one space and using the one door for airflow, is what he told me.
So you have another space left for rent in that building?
Yeah, but we're not-
We're not interested in doing that.
I know, sorry.
And it's not, we haven't advertised, there's-
Yeah, we've done no advertising.
So, I think-
Wes is the neighbor who put a couple of the-
He needed some place to put his extra overfill for this garage.
So, I, I think, based off of the, so Ms. Welly, appreciate you coming and, and bringing the concerns of the block watch, so based off of what I heard you say, it sounds like the conditions that we have addressed largely address the concerns related to parking, hours of operation, trying to screen to make sure that it's more of a residential, not allowing semi truck traffic and limiting the hours of operation. Would you agree with those statements?
I would more than agree with those statements.
Okay, and, and I understand, you know, we're obviously doing a lot of roadwork in, in the area with a variety of improvements, I know that Rob is going to be at the block watch party, I think, next month to tou, touch on some of those projects, and when, when construction is going on and there's dirt on the road, I know we've sent out the, the street sweeper to try to address that as well. Um, I would note, Eric, please correct me if I'm wrong, you know, the reason that we're talking only about the welding today is because it is a conditional use, so if we start to see a bunch of issues and disruption and semi trucks and you're not complying, then we can say you no longer have that conditional use and it can be removed. Similarly, a storage unit would also be a conditional use in this area, correct?
The storage units are only allowed in industrial-
Yeah, so it wouldn't even be permissible in this area, so if they've just been using it kind of for private use, and they understand if you are, you know, that's not an allowable use of this property if it is being utilized as a commercial property.
Okay, well, I guess that we all agree that when this first started, you were going to rent it out as three parts.
Yeah, we were tossing everything up straight up.
So that's when they first advertised it, this space costs this much, this space costs that much, so if there was no advertisement, there had to be some kind of advertisement, because I knew about it, the neighbors knew about it.
Well, you wouldn't worry about it.
Ladies, we're not getting in the back and forth, that's not how I run this meeting.
I'm saying that it has been, you know, it was in three parts, and as of Sunday, Mary's like, well Wes has his stuff that back there, is renting that from them back there, and he's complaining because they parked the dumpster in front of his door, and they told him just to push it out, but I guess that has all changed since Sunday and Monday, so.
Let's call the question.
Yeah, so obviously, there can be neighborhood gossip happen sometimes, ladies-
I guess it came from the people who are, have their stuff in there, but that's not gossip, that came from the people, but thank you for your time, again, this is not my personal thing, it's just, we have semis, and with it being so small and the grass area there, when the snow comes, the mud comes right along with it, and when they exit our neighborhood, we appreciate, I said something, but I've never got a response, but we appreciate the city, we just got 41 speed limit signs in our neighborhood, which is historical, you don't understand, we get nothing out there, 41 speed signs, thank you, city, we appreciate your help, we appreciate the girls' continued success to the business, welders, and to the girls running it.
Thank you, Ms. Welly. Um, all right, I will-
I've got some questions here yet. Uh, you make reference in the, in the script here about the garage that was built in 70 or 82, is that just a portion of this building that was built on at that time?
Is that a yes?
Yes.
Yeah, I would say it is a yes after testimony.
There's the rear, the back part, the little-
Hang, hang, hang on a minute.
Um, I, I really question, uh, also, a small business operating eight to five, Monday through Friday, especially when you're dealing with someone who comes in, they've got something that needs to be done, something's broke, need to fix it and so forth, so I'm not sure that we can hold him to those, those hours, or, I mean, I like the fact that we got him in there, but I, I don't know whether that'll act, actually take place. Uh, the other thing is that, um, welding, uh, and, and granted, you're, you're kind of classifying this as a, as an auto body type thing, but we, we're also understanding it's not really that, so I can't imagine that you would have everything enclosed inside all the time, and even with auto bodies work, we require that to be done behind closed doors. Here we have open doors that are not going to make that in compliance, it would seem as though it needs to be, some modifications would need to be done to the building so that they could keep the doors closed. I, I just don't think this is a very good fit, in my mind.
Appreciate the, the comments, Mr. Klinger, you know, and, and I agree, uh, with the hours of operation, I've kind of been noodling on that throughout the meeting, from the standpoint of, as long as it's not disruptive, right, as long as it's enclosed within the building, I don't care if, you know, my grandfather was in construction and he'd be working on things at 6:00 AM-
Yeah.
You know, Saturday morning, drinking his coffee, so I kind of understand, um, that, I think the biggest thing is, you know, the disruption to the neighborhood, and so I think, you know, having the, the, the condition of all the welding work being done in the enclosed space, recognizing, you know, you might have things that are sitting outside at some point, right, his, his vehicle, um, but I think if we limit the off-street parking to four spaces, add the screening, and require that the work be done in an enclosed space, I think that that really, you know, unless you are driving by when he's receiving a shipment, I don't think it's going to be that noticeable that he's inside working, you know, um, so I guess that really addresses my concerns, and I would reiterate that this is a conditional use, and if we start to have a bunch of issues and pictures of a semi truck sitting in the front yard, then obviously there's not compliance, and that's a zoning issue to start with already, so I feel pretty comfortable with giving this a try with the conditions as presented, and then being able to, to address if there's an issue.
One comment I would make, I'm, I'm very familiar with the type of work Greg does, and it's, when we talk about, uh, all welding work must be done in an enclosed space, what, the, the real issue is grinding, that's where the noise is at, right, that's, I mean, it's, you know, when they're prepping steel to get ready to weld, that's very loud, the weld, the actual welding itself is quiet, you don't, you don't, welding is not loud, you know what I mean? So, I would, I would say, modify this to all grinding work must be done in an enclosed space, you know, but if he wants to open the doors while he's welding to, you know, just to, for air, air exchanges, I, I, I would be okay with that, so I would limit that, I would say all grinding work must be done in an enclosed space, to just to limit the noise, but to me, it, I mean, it's common for weld shops to have doors open to, just to, um, air it out, so.
Thank you. Yeah, Matt?
Are there any employees?
No.
I'm just curious, so there, there's two, I was just curious, there's two trucks-
He might get a helper from now and then, but he doesn't, he doesn't have a full-time employee, he may down, there may be eventually, but not right now, he does not.
I'd like to hear it from the applicants.
If you could come forward so that you're on the record, please.
They got empty spaces that they can-
No, sir.
Okay.
There may be a helper or two, or, you know, buddy dropped by, but, you know.
Okay, I just, when I took, when I took photos, it seemed like there was, there was several people around, so I just-
Well, it's new, it's exciting for him, he's got family, he's got brothers, he's, you know.
Okay, I'll just-
Sorry, Matt.
No, no worries, I appreciate your enthusiasm.
Is there anyone else?
Is there anyone else here that wanted to speak for or against this item?
Okay. Is he already doing a little bit of welding on site?
He's gotten started a little bit, yeah. Started a couple of things.
All right. I will motion to approve the application for conditional use CU-12-2023 filed by Elizabeth Baldridge to allow welding in the building located at parcel 60001000740 at the corner of Olney and Moracle Boulevard with the following conditions, add screening along the west side of the parcel abutting residential, provide a parking area to accommodate four off-street parking spots, all grinding work must be done in an enclosed space.
Mayor, I think that the, uh, parking spots, since it's, we're looking at just that one unit, that, that can be, that can be okay to be attached to that, but being that it was seven, and probably had to have a variance attached to it, because it's deviating from the code requirement, if they rent out the other units, we can go back to forcing them to add the seven, I mean, the other three parking spots instead of doing the variance right now, does that make sense? We're looking at it as just that space, the four would cover that space.
Well, I, I guess from my perspective, four, for the property in its entirety, um, I'm still comfortable with, because those, those other spaces, as I understand it, are not necessarily large spaces even sufficient to have, you know, an office where you're going to have three or four people show up. Um, again, this is a conditional use, so if other items come into this space, then I think we could address that, or if they are parking on grass areas, then that's a zoning violation and they would be ticketed, so I think that from my perspective, the four spaces addresses it.
Okay.
Does anybody have other thoughts on that?
I, I don't think I go along with that, because you've got the square footage of the building and you have other spaces that could be, could be rented out. And now we're- Yeah, I, I, I'm, I'm struggling with this one.
That's fine. All right, there is a motion on the floor.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second, any other discussion? All right, Jacob, whenever you're ready.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Ms. Schroeder?
Aye.
Mr. Klinger?
Nay.
Uh, Mayor, Mayor?
Aye.
Uh, Mr. Darmen?
Abstain.
All right, so we had three ayes, one nay, and one abstention. All right, so you guys are approved, um, you'll need to work with staff to address the conditional items, um, and, uh, again, it is a conditional use, so if we start to have issues, it can be revoked. Thank you.
Just want to reiterate that gravel, new parking, gravel is not acceptable for new parking, the code requires paved parking.
I have a question.
Yeah.
As far as getting somebody in there to get paved, and, um, how much time do we have?
Oh.
To comply?
A, a reasonable amount of time. Like that answer?
So what we typically say is you need to show that you are reaching out and getting it scheduled, so we recognize sometimes it takes a couple months for a contractor to come in and do the work, but you need to be in communication with the staff that you're making progress on the conditions.
Generally, I think it needs, it needs to be in before this winter.
Yeah.
I don't know about financing and getting financing and, uh, you know, getting all the stuff and the estimate and the payment, I was hoping, uh, by spring or, uh-
Typically, we want it to be within three to six months, so-
You can't pave in the middle of winter.
Right, so, talk, talk to them and- Right. So, talk, talk to them and we'll be flexible within reason.
Okay. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Eric, will they need to submit a parking plan to you?
Um, yeah.
A layout?
It doesn't have to be like a full professional one, unless there's already, I mean, with the gravel there, I guess that goes into Jeremy's question too. With the gravel there, it's already seeping into the ground. So I don't know if they would have to put a catch basin or storm catch on the parking or not.
I mean, we can look at the square footage and land, but if they're not, if they're having minimal parking spots.
There's no storm along there yet anyhow, right, Jeremy? There's no storm.
There's no storm down through there anyways.
As a condition of the parking, we will, we will request the parking layout and we will have, general, we will then run it by Jeremy for drainage and any other issues. So.
Thank you. All right, moving on to tabled item number one, application.
Just real quick on the last item. I did want to point out, you know, sometimes there's a lot of narrative that West Park does not get a lot of attention. I know that the CDBG grants that regional planning and the city work together with, we had a period of eight years where every grant dollar that came to the city of Findlay was invested in West Park for sidewalks, water, sewer. So I just, I just wanted to mention that, that it's not a forgotten neighborhood and there has been significant investment.
Thank you, Matt. All right, tabled item, application number one for zoning amendment ZA-04-2023 filed by Shane Kelly to rezone six oh nine West Folk Avenue from R3 Small Lot Residential to C1 Local Commercial. CPC staff comments.
Okay. This request is located on the south side of West Folk Avenue, west of the intersection with Bolton Street. It's zoned R3 Small Lot Residential to the north along Trenton Avenue. It is zoned mostly C2 General Commercial. Along the south side of West Folk Avenue, it is zoned R3 Small Lot Residential. It is not located within a hundred-year floodplain, and the City of Findlay Land Use Plan designates the parcel as Small Lot Residential. Parcel history, this site has been a single-family home. The applicant, Shane Kelly, is the father of the property owner, Damon Kelly. They have requested to rezone the property to C1 Local Commercial so that he can operate his sublimation business on the property. Sublimation is a form of printing on items such as cups or t-shirts. He has an accessory structure that would allow him to store his equipment and operate the business. When he met with staff, he was interested in potentially doing a home business. However, he felt the lack of being able to have signage or foot traffic was detrimental to the success of the business. Findlay Land Use Plan designates the area, designates the site as residential. The request therefore goes against the land use plan as adopted by the City of Findlay, although the Findlay Land Use Plan is only one of our guiding criteria. Deviation from the plan is generally done under unique circumstances. In this case, for the request, there are a variety of other concerns that suggest deviation would not be a benefit to the surrounding community. These concerns include increased traffic, increased use intensity, and extending commercial south into a residential neighborhood. With that, so staff recommendation, staff recommends that Findlay City Planning Commission recommend denial of the application for zoning amendment ZA-04-2023 filed by Shane Kelly to rezone six nineteen West Folk Avenue from R3 Small Lot Residential to C1 Local Commercial.
Engineering?
No comment.
Fire prevention?
No comment.
The recommendation before the committee is staff recommends denial of the application for zoning amendment ZA-04-2023 filed by Shane Kelly to rezone six nineteen West Folk Avenue from R3 Small Lot Residential to C1 Local Commercial. Sir, are you the applicant?
Yes.
If you could come forward and please introduce yourself and tell us a little bit about this request.
I'm Shane Kelly. And what I would like to do is get a structure. It would go in this area off of the driveway, and I could use it as a workshop and then a location for customers to come and pick up orders. When I went and met with them, obviously the location where I live up here is Trenton Avenue, and then with the high school, and then down here, there's a lot of college housing. So there's already like a lot of foot traffic that go in front of the house. And when I talked with them about getting the structure there, I know I can put it there, but I would not be allowed to have any foot traffic at all. And it kind of, you know, given the location, I think the foot traffic would just be a great benefit. That's what I'm doing.
Did you, did you say you're putting, want to put a structure here?
Yes.
What, what size structure and, and for what?
It's fourteen feet wide, forty feet long.
Okay, so it would come from the setback line here, forty feet back?
Yes, sir.
And you've got a side yard setback of ten feet? It doesn't look like you have hardly enough room to get it in there.
Does that fit?
Under, under, under the commercial, the C1, you would have a ten, ten-foot side yard setback.
The size of this building, when we came up, it looked like it fit the scale. So it would fit in there.
Oh, it would?
Whether you'd have all the other parking requirements, I don't know.
Including the setbacks?
It might start to get tight.
So in the notes, staff, can you walk me through what other option there would be to be able to operate a business at this site while also not negatively impacting the neighborhood?
Essentially home occupation, which does not permit any signage, does not, you know, permit necessarily walk-up retail. So, you know, that's, that's the other option. But I think, I don't want to speak, the applicant alluded to it. His belief is that between the high school and the university, there would be foot traffic, word of mouth, and people wanting to come there to purchase things. In a home occupation, that's, walk-up retail is not really, is not permitted.
It would just be like you ordered ahead and you stopped by to pick it up?
Yeah.
It's not like a retail space.
Yeah.
Shane, are you the owner of the business?
Uh, yes, yes.
But you're on your son's property, then?
Yeah, yeah. We bought the house together, but he, yeah, it's in his name, correct.
What's in the fenced-in area out back? The white, there's a, right now, there's a six-foot white fence, I think?
Yeah, we fenced it in. We have cats.
Oh, okay. Oh, just a pet area?
Yeah, yeah.
All right.
A very expensive pet area.
So does that prevent you from getting a forty, a forty-foot-long structure in there? Is that, I don't know.
I'm sorry?
You were talking about this forty-foot-long structure, or maybe, and maybe there's not room for that then, I guess.
I'm trying to think, off the top of my head, from the front to the back of the parcel, how long it was. I think the fence, well, the fence stops right here. So like all this, it's just, it just won't be used. Otherwise, I mean, it's just not being used now. So, I mean, ideally, I would like to set it there, you know, if I, if I would be allowed to use it for the commercial use as close as possible, you know, so people can't see it. But, you know, if that's not the case, then I could set it, you know, further back.
Well, your required setback here would be twenty-five feet from the right-of-way. But then that's, that's going to set in front of this other house, and I wouldn't be in favor of that.
Right. Yeah, I've, I've talked with the neighbors. I actually talked with them before we were living in the property about that. And I've had a good dialogue with them. And depending on what would happen, the structure's not there as of now. But I would, I'm planning to go to Menards and get some PVC piping, map it out, and actually lay it out there and talk with them because the neighbors, to, I guess, the right, according to this, have lived there, I believe, for over forty years or so. So I'm not trying to do anything to disrupt them at all.
So, one of the staff's concerns, and I'm sympathetic, you know, I don't want to, you know, wash someone's small business or their ideas, but, you know, the rezoning of this, you know, when you look at folk, there's, it's a clear divide, commercial to the north, residential to the south. As you move down east, there is some university uses. But, you know, when we, if we rezone this, it's rezoned forever. And let's say ten years from now, the property sells and someone, someone then has the full right to everything in the C1 district. And so that's, the permanent nature of it is also a real concern in that, you know, our applicant's intentions can be stated, but then the property changes hands and they have the full right of everything in the commercial district. And it's, it's just, to me, I'm not personally, I'm not comfortable with that. And, you know, I want to do everything the city can do within our rules to help, help the applicant with his business, but I just don't feel that the commercial is, rezoning is appropriate in this case.
I agree with what you just said, and I want to support making this happen, but my concerns are the same as yours. And when I read this application, the accessory, shame on me, the accessory structure I interpreted when I looked at the map was the garage south of.
Me too.
So I'm like, so I wanted to understand how that would work without changing the zoning, because I don't want to disrupt the residential neighborhood, because if you do it once, you start sending that precedent. So can we talk about that, if that's even a feasible option to use the garage?
So.
Without changing zoning?
Correct. So the option that we kind of were working, when we met with the applicant, kind of working through, would be something along the lines of potentially adding the building a little further back, and that's, that's his working space. You know, you get an order for, you know, five hundred cups or t-shirts or whatever, you work on those, pick up, you know. So that's, you know, I think there is a way, and we'd have to, but adding the building further back, doing a conditional use as a home occupation would be, would be the path forward. Now, I'm not saying that that's going to be granted or not, but that's, in my mind, it's at least more palatable than rezoning the whole property.
But he wouldn't be able to have walk-up retail traffic?
Correct.
Right. So that's for his, from his perspective, that's maybe.
Yeah.
So I always kind of think, I agree too. I don't like to see this commercial creep into residential areas. So I'm leaning towards approving the denial. But I was just kind of thinking about, you know, could you do your retail sales somewhere else? You know what I mean? And like, you know, like set up, have a home business, set up shop in the garage, you know, and then, and then have, and then sell your product elsewhere. There's retail, I don't know, some remote.
Well, I kind of, right now, it's vending season, so that's kind of what I've been doing the last two years. And I was looking at going into the mall last year, and I didn't. And then the spot I was going to go into got taken by the Bodavere. And now there's also a t-shirt shop in the mall, and they have an exclusivity contract out there, so I cannot go out there. And then now just the price per square foot for, you know, like a brick and mortar location. The mall's very affordable. Other places are not so much. And also part of what, what I can do and what I've been wanting to do is, I want to have, I have blanks, so for cups, it doesn't really matter because they all, they're the same. But for like t-shirts and stuff like that, you know, everybody has a different size and color that they want. So one of the things that I want to be able to do is to have the designs and have the t-shirts there and just press them and go. So that's kind of what I want to need the structure there for. And when I did talk to these guys, and we were talking about not making it, you know, commercial, they said, and I could be wrong, that I wouldn't even be allowed to have customers come and pick up orders, which like I have had that for two years. So that was, you know, that absolutely deters or killed everything. But, but I can understand from the, from what you said, it's like opening a can of worms.
Just, just wanted to clear up communication. Customers could come and pick up an order.
I'm getting conceptual messages.
Well, yeah, home businesses shouldn't have any foot traffic at all, period.
What about hair salons that we approve?
Unless you approve it that way.
I mean.
It's, that's the.
It's hard to get your hair cut remotely.
Walk you through it.
The big holdup, the big holdup with me with the garage, you wouldn't be able to use that as a home business because it has to be detached to the house. And that's how it's.
Detached or attached?
Attached.
Attached.
So we'd have to build a breezeway, a four-foot-wide breezeway connecting it to the house.
Okay. And then. If he did internet orders, could he have a UPS truck come?
Yes.
Okay. So you could, you could do internet orders, have a UPS truck come pick up the order, and that would not be a retail traffic?
It'll be in those conditional use. You can put the condition that he could have one customer picking up or whatever, not.
Okay. So I think there's a lot of suggestion, and I think there's some rework that has to get done. But the, the item is actually rezoning residential to commercial, and we want to work with you. But I don't think, my opinion is that is not an option for this. So I would make the motion to deny the rezoning. And hopefully that the staff and people can work with you on other options to move forward, because we want you to be successful.
All right, thank you.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second. I would also add, I would encourage you to maybe touch base with some other local businesses. I know lots of our downtown establishments carry other local products to help sell them, and there might be some opportunity in the short term to get your products out in the community through other retail establishments so you don't have to have your own shop. But I would agree, I think the rezone isn't the right decision for this neighborhood, but we want to definitely work with you to do what we can to make sure you're successful.
Right.
Was there anyone else that was here to speak for or against this item? People sometimes hide over there, so I want to make sure I ask. So hearing no further discussion, Jacob, whenever you're ready.
Mr. Darmen?
Aye.
Ms. Schroeder?
Aye.
Mr. Klinger?
Aye.
Mayor, Mayor?
Aye.
And Mr. Martin?
Aye.
All right.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to tabled item number two, application for site plan review SP-16-2023 filed by Andec LLC to construct a three-story, twenty-four-unit apartment building at parcel six zero 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 three zero two two one zero on West McPherson Avenue. CPC staff comments.
Okay. So this request is located on the south side of West McPherson, just east of the intersection with Heard Avenue. It's currently in the process of rezoning from O1 Office Institution to M2 Multifamily High Density. It is in a neighborhood of R1 Large Lot Residential, and it is, it was a part of the PUD for Lake Cascades Park, is not located within a hundred-year floodplain. Parcel history, the site is currently vacant. Staff analysis, the applicant would like to construct a three-story apartment building on the site. DAF received an updated site plan for the site as well as elevations for the building. Site plan shows the three-story structure can accommodate twenty-four. Uh, the site plan shows the three-story structure can accommodate, uh, twenty-four single-bed units. Uh, the units are above the minimum five hundred square foot, uh, in living space required in the M2 district. Uh, in terms of the lot size, uh, twenty-four units exceeds the lot size ratio of one unit per thirty-five hundred square feet, so they will need a variance from the BZA to increase from sixteen units to twenty-four. Uh, the applicant indicated that they wanted to stick with the twenty-four one-bedroom units rather than a higher bedroom count, because that in theory would increase the number of people in each unit. Uh, that would then put an increased, um, an increased strain on the number of parking spaces which we would need to meet for, uh, every unit. Uh, in terms of the site layout, uh, we've seen a, an update in parking plan to accommodate the, the dead-end, uh, parking turnarounds on the drive aisles. Uh, the parking lot itself can accommodate forty-one parking spaces with two being handicap accessible. Uh, this is below the minimum standard for M2, which requires two parking spaces per dwelling unit and one per five units for visitor parking. Uh, but the applicant indicated that the reduction in total parking was derived from the idea that each unit was only a single bed, uh, bedroom, so they would not require as many parking spots as a traditional development. But once again, uh, they'll need to get a variance from BZA, um, for that to get approved. Uh, landscaping plan, um, was submitted and meets the standards, except that there were, uh, there were short five shrubs on the foundation planning, so staff would just like to see those shrubs added, uh, to the site plan. Uh, on the east side of the site, uh, they indicated the privacy fence to screen from the resident, residential neighbor. Uh, this would drop down to a forty-foot-long, four-foot-high fence, uh, all the way to that, uh, north property line. Uh, staff, uh, would be, um, amenable to having the, the four-foot-high fence changed out with some decorative landscaping, if, if possible. Um, staff recommendation, so staff recommends approval of the application for site plan review, SP dash sixteen dash twenty twenty-three filed by Andec LLC to construct a three-story, twenty-four-unit apartment building at parcel number six zero 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 three zero two two one zero on West McPherson Avenue with the following conditions, uh, approval of the rezoning from O1 Office Institution to M2 Multifamily High Density, and variances provided from the BZA to increase the allowed total units from sixteen to twenty-four, and the reduction in parking from fifty-three to forty-one.
Thank you.
And just real quick, um, I just want to note that I, I have received a few more, uh, concerns from neighbors in the surrounding area, just saying that the intensity of the use is something that is causing concern, and the height of the, um, the building compared to the surrounding neighborhood, um, they have concerns on that.
Thank you. Engineering?
Um, so access for the site, uh, like Jacob was saying, is coming off of McPherson there. I know it's discussed having it go over to the west side of the parking lot. I guess from my view, it, it doesn't matter if it's on the east side or west side. Um, so I'll let you guys kind of make a decision on that, but if it is foot lot, um, not a big deal for my end. Um, the water service through there, um, both the water and the sanitary are going to be utilizing the utility lines is running north-south through the site to the east side there. Um, with the water service, I'm assuming that's going to be a master meter, so we'll work on, um, location that either inside or outside, but we'll work with you with the, um, our water department. We'll work with you on final location of that. Um, but really, stormwater-wise, they have the detention pond shown. Um, they do have, um, a SWIP plan connected with, or, um, with this applicant. Um, so just make sure all the permits are in hand before you start construction.
Fire prevention?
Um, obviously the construction permits, um, and the other thing was the concern for the accessibility for fire apparatus or ambulances with the dead end, but apparently we've had some changes to that that I didn't know about, so.
Well, uh, this, this is the updated site plan, so what we do is we can sit down and talk about how we would go about doing this, and we, we obviously want to work with you guys. That's the last thing we want is to have, uh, safety personnel not be able to get in there and function properly, so we'll definitely work with you on that.
Thank you. Dan, you want to give us an overview, follow-up on any items that were discussed at the prior meeting?
Matt, can you go to, uh, an aerial view? Uh, first comment that Jeremy brought up was, um, I'll, I'll start engineering first, was the access. Um, based on our last meeting when we talked about, you know, the, when we were going through the rezoning, there was discussion on the location of the driveway. We did look at it, and then, um, with the tower being over here, um, and their easements and everything, we're trying to keep the development on the east end, try to keep it further away from the substation and stuff. So if we were to mirror this particular parking lot, that driveway would line up right with this person's house. And the last thing we wanted to do was have lights going in, into their house on a daily basis. This area here, we know is the back, uh, the back end of the school, you know, so the light, any light shining there is not going to be going into somebody's front door. So we looked at that, um, so we felt that this would be a better option, less, uh, less intense for the neighbor across the street. The developer has been in contact with this gentleman here, the, the property owner's there, uh, discussing the fencing and landscaping on there. I don't think there's an issue with the reduction or the removal of that four-foot fence. Again, we're just trying to provide the best screening we possibly can against the residential neighbor, and like I said, Andrew's been working with him ever since the, uh, rezoning. Uh, water service, we have no problem, uh, we'll get with Jeremy and water shop, figure that out. I guess I gotta learn how to count, I miss five bush shrubs, so we'll, we'll get those, we'll get those addressed. Other, other than that, you know, I think, you know, we had a pretty good discussion at the rezoning of the site, the layout, the concerns about all of the neighbors. We've tried to address those as much as possible, and I guess if you guys have any other questions, we'll be more than happy to answer them.
So from my perspective, um, I re, I really appreciate the elevations, because, um, I'd like, you know, address some of the concerns with the, especially the end, like the stairwells having the screening there, so somebody can't just stand and, you know, stare at the neighbor's backyard, um, so I know that that addresses a concern. I think this looks really nice. This is just a preference, but I'm, I'm assuming this is kind of a, not a super royal bright blue, but more of a subdued, and it's just a preference.
The color of the shutters is more reflective, it's a dark navy blue.
Okay.
I saw that picture, I'm like, oh, that's not, it's not going to be.
It's all right. I, I trust your aesthetic. I've seen your other properties and you do a nice job.
Program, if you zoom in or whatever.
Okay.
It's darker, and again, the, I won't have a pop of color, but at the same point, it's, I don't want to be a vibrant, vibrant blue. It will not be that color.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
And, and yes, the reason, uh, if you scroll down just a hair on the site elevation with that wood look, just a little bit of, of that in there, was to address that concern with the neighbor on the, uh, the east of that.
Yeah.
Um, can you keep scrolling that, just real quick? So.
Which way?
Down.
Looks like little storage units?
Yeah, are those like closet spaces for the tenants?
Part of the reason is, is these are small, one-bedroom apartments. Uh, we want them to re-lease from us, and one of the issues, the biggest concern would be is, say, uh, a guy moves in by, by himself, and then he ends up getting girlfriend or getting married or whatever, that, that you're not going to have a lot of room for storage. So this addresses ten, uh, out of the twenty-four units worth, at least we have some accommodation for, for the tenants. Um, I know that that, that will be something that comes up, so bicycle, Christmas decorations, whatever. At least there's something, they're small, but it, for a one-bedroom apartment, it, it, uh, it'll help.
Very nice.
So I just wanted to ask, you guys talked through, you said you talked through the screening on the east side. Can you elaborate a little bit about where you guys are with that, please?
Yeah, yeah. Um, so I spoke with the neighbors, his name is Derek, immediately to the, to the east, northeast side of this parcel. Stopped by, talked to him. First off, his first comment was, I, I don't really have any concerns or, or whatever with this, but I just told him, well, I want to make sure we, we cooperate and I get something that you want. So I discussed the fact that I want to have an eight-foot fence, as far as I could, reduce it to the, uh, maximum I could, which I believe is three or four feet, take that as far as I could to the north. And then, um, suggestion Dan had was, rather than putting the landscaping on my parcel, which I, I believe it has utility easement there, and eventually they could be ripped out, um, to, to ask a neighbor if he would cooperate to let me put him on his side. He didn't care. He, he had a horticulture degree, so he had some concerns about what species I went with. I will work with him on that. I don't, I don't have a huge bias towards anything, so he, he didn't seem to care. Um, he, um, just asked basically, when I went to do it, what, he wanted to have some recommendation as to what specific species they were. Thank you.
Perfect, glad to hear that. One, one comment, I just want to say thanks, Dan and Andrew. Um, when you were looking at the parking, I know I had asked kind of to look at that flip-flop, and I appreciate you guys noticing the negative impact it would have had to that other neighbor. I, I agree that keeping it as is and making the adjustments with the property to the east makes a lot of sense, and will definitely be more accommodating in the neighborhood, so I appreciate you addressing that.
Um, I have a question too. Just as a point of reference, Dan, I like to see just the, the outline of the adjacent properties when we're dealing with other neighbors and how close we are and stuff. I think it helps us a lot. Now, we can see it on the aerial, obviously, but I like to see it on the site plan.
The problem we run into there, Dan, is trespassing on somebody else's property, doing surveying, stuff like that. So we, we, we tried to do it, um, I'll take that in consideration for our next surveys, but we got, we walk that fine line. I don't want to go up to their house and have one of my guys standing at a corner of their house taking a shot at it, and have them call the police, because that has happened before. Um, so we, we got to be very cautious on how close we get. The other thing is with the new equipment, we have, we can shoot it reflectorlessly, if that's a word. Um, so we can do a direct measure on it, so, uh, that's one thing we're starting to do with our surveys, so I'll make sure that our guys are aware of that, to start locating that, so you can have a better understanding of how close it is actually to the property lines.
Okay. Now, I think on the west side, you're putting in a two-foot mound and an eight-foot fence? Along there, how lo, how far along that, uh, right away, or, you've got to allow this easement for the tower there, correct? And so it would be on this side?
Yes.
And how far is that going to go?
It's going to stop right at the front setback, it's going to follow and go all the way to the back setback. And the eight, you know, the eight-foot fence cannot go into the setbacks, so we're just keeping it essentially along that area, right there from setback to setback.
Okay. Um, then also, I, I was looking at that property and the way the land kind of lays, and I think if we had a mound here, that would even help to soften the parking lot, a mound with landscaping on top. You know, the landscaping you're proposing, just elevate it now.
Yes.
Uh, I think that would help with the headlights and stuff, if you had a two-to-three-foot mound along there?
Basically, with it only being ten foot off, most likely, it's going to be, you know, maybe two, two and a half, because we still want to make it maintainable.
Yeah, right.
But yeah, we could, we could definitely do that. We're going to have plenty of topsoil from stripping the parking lot and stuff like that, so we can go ahead and note that that landscaping to be on a, a small earth and berm prior to installation.
And maybe that could even also take place right here, part of, part of the way along the.
Yeah, that, there, there we have to be careful. Um, we have the public utility easement with water and sanitary. We don't want to get too crazy in too much there, because the higher the ground grade is, the deeper the city equipment has to get in.
Uh huh.
But again, that's, you know, something we can look at, and that's a lot narrower of a distance.
Right.
You know, we're, we're at about five feet at the south and maybe seven feet at the north. So to get a mound in there, it's, it's going to be pretty tight. Plus, the last thing I want to do is put that mound in there and trap water on the neighbor's, uh, property, then we have a bigger issue.
True.
Jeremy, did you have a comment?
Yeah, I was going to say, I would agree with what Dan's saying. I don't want any fill on top of a utility line already. Um, you know, we're, if we're already ten feet deep and that's just add more, and it's difficult, so anytime, we can stay away from mountains, mounds, I agree with Dan.
Okay. Uh, and then here on your footprint of your building, I don't see it as matching what's been presented here as far as the plan. Uh, I don't see the, the stairwells on the end, I don't see the storage, I don't see the, the patio decks on the backside and so forth that I can really kind of relate to a little bit better.
Well, for some reason, the architect didn't get it done in time.
He didn't. Well, I, I would have a discussion with him.
What we did is, again, this was kind of a work in progress with Andrew, working with the architect, to come up with the final details of the enclosed stairwells and that there. Those were ongoing during our plan design. We had a good idea of the overall perimeter, including the stairwells. That's kind of what that rectangle represents. The final plans, we will make sure that we will have all of the sidewalk connectivity, these little storage lockers, the, uh, exterior stairwells, the rear, you know, uh, patios and stuff like that. All of that will be shown on the final site plans, and again, we'll make sure that everything is compliant with code.
Okay, are, are you going to, on the site plan, or on the building footprint, are you going to keep that as low as you can? Or which, you know, it's not going to be elevated, uh, for the first floor, is it?
No, no, the ground, the ground floor is going to be right around the existing grade, so we're not elevating the site to make it even higher.
Yeah.
Um, so yeah, it's, it's going to be pretty much at grade.
And I realize you have to make the numbers work and all, but I really struggle with the fact that, uh, we were asking BZA for a variance on, on, on the, um, number of units per square foot, and I also struggle with the height that the building is we're going to present there, a three-story building in that one-story community is just, seems to be a little awkward to me. I just, it, it's just comments that I have, and I know that we, I kind of mentioned that to you, I think, last meeting even, but, I'm not sure the three-story is, is desirable there.
Part of, uh, the intent with that is putting these balconies on the back end, um, have an overlook of Lake Cascades. It's a nice view that, again, not, not many options in general exist, and having it clear at the south end, and, and again, last, uh, month ago, we discussed trees on the north side, to kind of screen that off and break that up. Um, so understand the concern, but I, um, that was part of the attraction to the location, was just keeping it on the south end, looking at, at the Lake Cascades is, uh, pretty, especially sunsets.
Now, uh, this, this is based, uh, the footprint of the building is still based upon the relocation of the building from Grand Avenue?
Correct. Uh, well, yes and no, a portion of that. So we're, we added the width of a couple foundations to get to the twenty-four units.
Right. But if, if you weren't doing that, you could, maybe the units could be a little deeper or something like that, to where you wouldn't maybe have to be three stories. I mean, that's a total redesign of what you, the head, direction you're heading.
If there were less units, I don't know that it, it would make as much sense. Uh, and again, part of the attraction to this location, I was looking at another one, inferior flood zone. Um, having this one, being able to get the extra height, I wanted originally four stories. That, that, I understand, was a bit, bit of a tall order. Um, that also required, uh, an elevator and.
Right.
So it made more sense to go a little bit wider at the three rather than the other. I just particularly like this location for the, you know, the overlook that other options don't have.
So I just have one clarifying point, and maybe I'm, I'm reading this wrong. On your elevations, the main, the entrance to the units will be on the north elevation. And then the balconies are on the south overlooking Lake Cascades.
That is correct.
Okay, so I think this is mislabeled then.
You have an error in your drawing.
This just has the north and south flipped.
That's correct.
And the east and west.
You're correct.
So these roof dormers are facing McPherson.
Yes, yes.
Could you do the elevation, please?
Yeah.
So.
It may be mislabeled on there.
Yeah, so the, so the dormers and the entrance to the apartments will be on McPherson, and then the back balconies of the apartments will be overlooking Lake Cascades.
That is correct.
Okay.
That is correct. Okay.
Yep, that, that made sense. I just wanted to confirm since it's mislabeled.
That right there will be facing the parking lot.
Yep.
Yeah, that should say north elevation. They are flipped.
Okay. So, yeah, I, you know, I understand all of the concerns. Um, I think that this is the best-case scenario with how it's been designed and presented, and I think that it will provide kind of a, a unique opportunity overlooking Lake Cascades. I think though it will be more intense than, you know, a single-family residential, I think it actually creates a nice buffer from the substation. If I was one of the residents, I would rather, in that street, I would rather look at this than the, the substation. I guess that's just my personal preference, but, um, and I think that this is, uh, laid out well-thought, and I think will also add some nice, uh, greenery, while also addressing a community need, which is obviously housing. Um, so I'm excited to see this project come together, um, and I think that, you know, trust you to execute it well, to make sure that it's something that's really an improvement, uh, or, you know, a benefit to the neighborhood as a whole.
So I am less excited about it. I guess, but first of all, I, I am in support of the zoning. Last month, you guys, I wasn't here, but, um, I, I do like the zoning now. It's, I think, I think apartments fits in that site great. I, I like that. I guess, uh, I spent with one of the neighbors the other night, and, um, she just, she just felt like it looked like a red roof inn. You know, with the exterior walkways, I mean, other than it's red, and now it's, this is blue, but it's going to look like a red roof inn, you know what I mean? And, and that was just very concerning to them, you know, I, um, I just think. mean? And, and that was just very concerning to them, you know. I, I just think these small apartments are going to be transient by nature. You know, I think you're, you're, it's not a family-oriented building. It's going to be, you're just going to transient. I mean, you're going to have people coming and going. I don't, I don't think you're going to get long-term renters. That's just concerning, I guess. Um, let me think here.
Dan, can I comment on that?
Sure.
So when my husband and I got out of college at the University of Finley, and we were young professionals starting out, paying down college debt, we were looking for a nice spot that was affordable to a young couple that owned one car and walked to work. And I think that though there probably will be some individuals, you know, interns or people that are here on assignment for local manufacturing and may only be here for a year or two, I also think that this is going to be really attractive to young professionals that are just starting out and want to be in a nice residential neighborhood that's still close to downtown to be able to walk, to work and to amenities. But also something that's probably a little more affordable than trying to find a, a big townhouse or renting an entire home or, you know, and a, we really don't have. I hear from young people all the time. I have interns and young professionals reach out to me constantly that they can't find things and end up moving to Bowling Green or to Berriesburg and making it. And then we have this issue where then long-term, they say, well, why am I making this drive? I can find a job in another community where I can find housing. So personally, I think that this is exactly what a young professional starting out would be looking for, that, you know, they have the connectivity with the trails. It's close to, my husband and I lived on Lincoln Street, and we walked to Donnell Pond and to the tennis courts a lot on the weekends. So I understand that there may be some of that transient, but I think you'll be pleasantly surprised with the, the individuals that are going to be interested in these units.
So what, what do you think the rent will go for something?
It will be under a thousand, but in the nine hundred to a thousand range.
Okay.
And we had a single-bedroom, 500-foot, you know, small, small apartment. So I think that this would be really nice.
So why wouldn't we attract the transient construction worker that's currently out at the, the motels and their...
Well, I guess, can you define transient? Because, you know, first of all, I'm assuming you're probably not having shorter leases than three months, and you're probably six or 12-month leases.
Yeah, no, we wouldn't even consider anything less than a 12-month. We don't need to. Again, the demand, the reason I'm doing this is because two years ago, I bought some apartments, several of them being one-bedroom, very, actually, the layout ironically is very similar to this. And fixing them up, more high-end, and lease them out. It's been over a year. We've had majority of people renew. We haven't seen the transient. I understand the concern. I think that concern is less justified than one would think. So here, for example, a year ago, one of these one-bedroom apartments, I was going into Verizon to get my, get my phone, get a new phone. And the one guy there was lamenting the fact that he lives in BG and wants to move to Finley. And he, the reason he wasn't moving to Finley, he worked at the Verizon store on Tiffin Avenue, was because there's, there's no good options. He wants something nice, and he can afford something nice, but just, he, he hasn't found anything. He ended up renting one of these apartments. So again, there are people that are not making their way back because of that, what you'd mentioned.
No question, we need housing. I, I, I think it's great to have rentals. I'm just not sure about this type of rental, I guess. So, I mean, you've built some beautiful townhouse-type, I mean, I don't know, what, did you consider that on this property?
The demand, right now, there's a demand for this. And there's, there's not a lot of this. And as part of that, other apartments that we did, we have an overflow of people needing this right now. And again, part of that was strategically, for me personally, I have a lot of two and three bedrooms. I don't have a lot of one bedrooms. So all the time, we're just denying people, oh, we don't have any available. Oh, we don't have any available. So for the people that can afford frankly, a higher price point that we, we would offer or have that come to us for our two or three bedroom, that would maybe, would be sufficient with a one. We could direct them at something more high-end with a one, one bedroom. So I, I understand that concern, but I, I also want to make sure that we're screening tenants well and having a good quality place so it's easier to manage and we can maintain the other good tenants.
So to that point, I just want to clarify, you're the builder and developer. Who manages the actual, okay, I wanted to clarify that. It's not like you hand it off and
No, no.
Good luck, and hopefully we have good tenants moving forward.
Not at all, no.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
I have a management company that manages all the properties.
I just wanted that to be clarified. Thanks.
Yep.
So, I, to the parking issue, so we're, we're not, what are we saying? I guess there's, how many short are we on the parking, I guess? I don't know. How many?
Twelve.
Twelve. So, I don't know, what happens when we start exceeding and we're parking on the street and in the church? I mean, how, how does that get managed?
Sure. Couple of things. One thing I'll reiterate, I mentioned last month. I don't, I don't know if you were here or not.
I was not.
Okay. So that other apartments that I referenced earlier, they're 24 units. This has 24 units. Half of those are two bedrooms, and that has less parking than what I'm, I'm suggesting here. It's 38 spaces. That being the case, we have, I think, eight spaces at any time in excess. So the concern with not having enough parking is definitely not a concern. I, I don't want to deal with that. It's a pain for me and it upsets tenants. We haven't had that at that other place, but in different properties, I've had that. So I think what is designed here is more than what we'd need, but not tremendously more than what we need. I think it's sufficient and we will have excess parking. There will never be a concern where we, people happen to park on the streets or anything like that. I, I don't want that to happen because it's an inconvenience to my tenants, therefore making this a less ideal place to rent. However, if that were to become an issue, on the northwest side of the parking, we can always extend, extend that to where we can gain three or four or five spaces. So it was designed with that in mind, so that if that became an issue, we could always do that. I am not at all concerned that that would become an issue.
By taking that tree out, you mean, or?
Correct.
Yeah, these, obviously, these are two large mature trees that, or two large mature trees that we're trying to save. That's why the parking kind of stops there and with the dog park and stuff. So if, you know, conditions do come up where there are concerns of people parking in the street and stuff like that, we can address it, get a parking lot plan put together with the city, make sure everything's compliant that way, kosher with code, and then they would be able to park over that way.
From an aesthetic standpoint, I wanted to maintain the trees, screen off, you know, the substation and whatnot. And I, and again, I think that, that ironically...
No, I like the tree.
And I would just note that that street is no street parking. So that wouldn't be an option. They would have to expand here, you know, I guess with worse, worse, do a arrangement with the church or something.
Yeah, they're going to go to the church.
If, if that became an issue, like I said, I have no problem extending the parking because I'm confident that it will not become an issue.
And one last thing to add to that, you know, I've often thought we need, and Grant brought up some good points to me about a month ago. I'm no fan of parking, you know. You just want enough parking to make it work. And I view one of the weaknesses of our code, well, I don't want to say weakness. Other communities look at the number of bedrooms and calculate off of bedrooms, where we just calculate two per unit. It could be four bedrooms or one bedroom, you know. So I think by going by bedrooms might give us a more realistic look at what is needed. So, you know, we, we've adjusted the parking. We were at almost, almost three spots per unit. We lowered that to two, and now I think, you know, on my future to-do list is to look at the parking for residential and what's required, and potentially going at, looking at the number of bedrooms versus just two per unit. So I, I could see that changing in the future. And in this, this is the perfect example of, of why we might change it.
Well, one comment to go off of that. According to Fair Housing, I have to allow, I can't deny tenants any less than two per bedroom. Very rarely does that happen. But if these were two or three-bedroom, I would have no choice but to permit that in leasing. That's, for me, that's also why having the one-bedrooms is attractive, because I don't want, these are not intended to have large families with two, two or three kids. So this being the case, you're going to see majority single people, half probably single people and/or young couples. So this, this will, having the one bedroom will limit the amount of people on, on the site versus these being two or three bedrooms.
Just to clarify, you're talking about number of person?
Number of people, yes.
For a second there, I was thinking parking spot.
No, 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 I'm talking, I'm just talking, no, no, people.
That'd be a lot.
Does the dog park have a fence around it?
Yeah.
It's not shown on the drawings.
On the west side, there will be that, an eight-foot fence.
Yeah.
And then there will be one that is, I haven't picked it out, but something that you can kind of see through so that people can see through onto the dog park.
So you like a four-foot high?
Yeah, something like that. I have it at the other property. Works very well.
And what materials are we talking about?
Some kind of metal. I'm not, aluminum, some kind of, something that, again, ties in well with, well with the property. Probably would go similar to the rail, well, it'll probably be similar railing around like the decking and/or the balconies. Something that looks, looks at least similar enough to where it ties in well.
Not chain link?
Not chain link, no.
No.
No chain. One other thing that's not, not shown on here, we might, it's a popular amenity. We might do a very small, like, raised garden bed, community garden for tenants, something like that. Just another amenity. It's not shown on here, but a small little spot like that tenants seem to like, and think that'd be attractive.
Thank you. Just, I can't sometimes see, I don't know if there's anyone else here to speak for or against an item. You wanted to say something?
Two questions. Where's the dumpster? And Andrew, did you keep the access under the light path, under the path on the south side?
Right now, the dumpster's located right here, the way the trucks can come in, back up and out. And as of right now, there is no access going down to Lake Cascades.
However, I have spoken with them, and they wouldn't, I understand, like, they wanted to see the elevations before agreeing to anything, but they were very open to it. Also, keeping me, keeping me well aware of the fact that they could put trees on that sliver of parcel to block the view. So I have, again, vested interest in making sure it looks, looks nice.
Dan, I'm sure that is the dumpster being close to that, less than east to the east.
We've pushed it as far back as possible. You know, again, it's, it's all the way back here. Again, we're trying to keep a simple path for the access. But like I said, they'll come straight in back. If we shove it over here, now they're going through the parking lot. So again, we try to keep a straight line shot. Again, it's going to be screened. It's sitting back. Hopefully, the operation, when they're loading and unloading will be during normal hours and not at three o'clock in the morning.
They can't.
Re-require.
I'm sure I will get a phone call if they do.
One additional thing, we'll make sure that the fence and the ground meet. There is no air gap to where it's going to, anything could come out and blow across the neighbors.
That's one, one of the concerns that we hear about dumpster enclosures is the fence sits up off the ground, trash is blowing all over. So as Andrew stated, you know, the details and everything show the fence to be sitting relatively flush with the concrete pad it sits on.
Dan, another question here. This is the setback line, I think. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. And, and because this footprint is not the way I would like to see it, is the patios overhanging that setback line or?
I don't believe they are. Like I said, I have not seen the final layout and the exact dimensions and everything. So, okay, once we get the final footprint, we'll get it positioned on there. And that's why I made the statement that everything will be adjusted accordingly. So we're out of, we're in compliance with code. So we do have a decent amount of land in between the parking and that there. So if we have to shift this building up a few feet to allow for these overhangs, we have the room.
Okay.
They're only approximately five feet, which would be close as it is, if anything, the building might need to ship further north, maybe a foot, two feet.
Other questions or comments? Hearing none, I will motion to approve, let me get my notes. I will motion to approve site plan SP-16-2023 filed by Andec LLC to construct a three-story, 24-unit apartment building at parcel 600000302210 on West McPherson Avenue with the following conditions: approval of the rezoning from O1 Office Institution M2 multifamily high-density, variances provided by ZTA, BZA to increase the allowed total units from 16 to 24 and the reduction in parking from 53 to 41. And I would also add the earthen berm on the north side.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All right, Jacob, whenever you're ready.
I'm Ms. Schroeder.
Aye.
Mr. Klinger.
Aye.
Mayor Meara.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Garrett.
No.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yep, thank you.
Just want to say, Andrew's been excellent to work with. His attention to detail and his intentions, I really think, will make this a good project. I, I've had some concerns, but I'm really glad that Andrew's bringing this forward.
Thank you. All right, final tabled item, application for zoning amendment ZA-02-2023, a request, request to repeal the existing City of Finley zoning code and replace it with an updated version. Discussion. Actually, let's pause and take a quick break. Five minutes.
I think, I just think, I think you're doing a lot of contractors and MetroNet and, I feel the mayor's saying, there's going to be a few people like that, but I just think, I don't know. Ah, thank you, sir.
Well, if they won't take
How are you?
If they won't take late leases less than four months, then that would, it would make a transient issue.
Yeah.
David, we're in.
Well, again, until they can't fill it, right? You know what I'm saying? I mean, I don't know. I just, I hope it plays out that way. We'll see. But, you know, I mean, I don't know.
I would like this.
Yeah, I don't, yeah, no, there's a lot of things there. I, I agree.
And if it wasn't based on the pond, why, footprint of the building that wants to move, yeah, could you, you'd be a little deeper and narrower or something?
This is a big moneymaker for him. He'll, he'll make a fortune on this thing. He's, I mean, he can afford to do it. They need something to, because he can. You know, I think he's got support and he's done. But I, I don't...
Well, I think it's, it's, just like me, I wanted to make sure in the notes that I was expressed my concern about going for the variance, you know, and the height of the building. So, but I, again, I think the multifamily is probably a desirable or decent use of it.
Yeah, go for it. So you got through the debris on my front porch? So I've been painting these railings for like, two weeks now. It's like, oh my God, grinding all the paint off. It is such a pain. It's horrible. It's a horrible job.
Yeah, I saw all the stuff out there. I was like peeking around, like, do you see him?
The hell's going on?
Yeah, I was, I was out of town last week for that wedding, so that's why I was delayed.
Where was, where was your wedding at?
It was in Oregon.
Oh, that one, oh, oh, good. Oh, yeah.
My, my wife's family, she has two sets of aunts and uncles who live out once in Portland and once in Richmond. So they like turned it into like a
That's a nice part of the world out there.
Weekend, yeah. And the one, the Portland uncles, they have a house on Manzanita on coast.
Yeah.
So we were out in the, you know, wine country, three days, heading out to the coast for July.
Oregon coast is very different, isn't it?
It's cool.
Yeah. It's, it's not, yeah, it's not, it's not hot weather out there for sure. I mean, yeah, windy and I've been out there and it's like, man, I mean, it's not like the east coast.
Our beach day was, they were like, oh, it's warm today. And it was like 72.
Yeah, right. Yeah, right. I mean, it's just tolerable, right? I mean, yeah, you don't, you're not out there sunbathing and, you know, it's
We're all in like sweatshirts and, you know, long pants. Our girls are like, it's not really warm here. So, but it's, it was good to be out there.
Yeah.
Out to Oregon.
Oh, good. You guys are all going out west, huh?
Yeah.
Yeah, apparently, that's where to go. I don't know.
Have a nice wine country out there.
Yeah. Yeah, they have some great Pinot Noir out there. That's for like, yeah, it's really...
Yeah, the, so Sarah's cousin works at a vineyard and their specialty is riesling.
Oh, is that right?
Yeah. They're like the second highest producer of riesling in the, in the valley.
Wow.
so. It was good, yeah. And then he likes special, they just branched out into like making gin and bourbons.
Oh, is that right? Got a little still, yeah.
So, one of the days, we had a tasting, so that was the highlight of my trip.
There you go.
We need a coffee shop up front here, so we can get a refill on our coffee.
Happy Amici's literally right there. We support all the downtown businesses.
I need a ten-minute break then.
A ten-minute break?
We need ten minutes, right?
Well, hopefully, hopefully this.
Is this different than the one you gave me? Or?
This is just a summary of it.
Yeah, I know, but is this different than?
The summary has changed, it's mostly the same.
Okay, all right. All right.
I know, I noticed that too, we'll have to get early on it. Okay, thank you.
We lost our audience.
Yeah.
All right.
I knew this was going to be so exciting.
We're back discussing our final item for today, which is the repeal and replace of the city of Findlay zoning ordinance. So Matt, I know we've been talking about this over the last year or so almost, just to reiterate, we have had fa, seven different public discussions on this topic, or seven hours of public discussion over five different meetings between planning and zoning committee and city planning commission. We have had a public comment period before we even began the formal process to ensure folks had an opportunity to provide feedback. One of the big pieces that we did receive feedback on was the farm animal ordinance and some of the items there. That has been taken out of this discussion, this version, for further discussion, so that we can look at a better way for grandfathering, what are appropriate limits. We had met, just for this group's edification, before we even made our proposal, we met with 4H representatives from the Ohio State Extension Office and the Fair Board, all to get their feedback on how we can balance both recognizing that we're in a city urban environment and we want to keep animals safe and healthy, we also want to make sure that neighborhoods, you know, are protected and that you have proper animal containment, while also recognizing we want people to be able to have, you know, animals if they so choose and participate in agricultural learning, et cetera. And so we have worked through this process at length, I know Matt even presented to the Findlay Area Apartment Association back in May, and we've had the, the updated versions as we have gone through discussion on our website. So I feel like we have had a really good process, I know we've talked through a couple of significant changes here multiple times. So what we would, our goal for today, based off of how the conversation goes, would be to provide final comment on modifications that we would like see, like to see go forward to the planning and zoning committee. That committee then would review and make any additional recommendations, and then they would, if they approve it, then make a full recommendation for it to go to city council. With zoning amendments, they have to go, they cannot have the emergency clause and they cannot have readings waived. So it would then go for all three readings, and if a big issue came up, it could be tabled and re-discussed and amended. So we still have a lengthy process ahead of us, but I just kind of want to reiterate the process to date, how we got here, as well as then what the process looks like going forward. With that, I think, Matt, you've provided a summary, I know you provided that to all of us in advance, so rather than going through, if there are any changes from the prior versions that were circulated, I'd like you to hit on those, and then if any committee members have questions, comments, concerns, I think that would be the best way to address today's meeting. Sound good?
Yeah, and I'd like to see how that goes, and I have a feeling we might be getting close to moving forward. I wouldn't mind kind of just giving a summary fairly quickly, so, but we'll, we'll start with changes.
Yeah, let's do that, and then we can definitely.
Let me rewind to the, the public process. So we've had, we had five meetings over seven hours, public was all invited, and that was all before any legislative steps have moved forward. We also received about twenty-five emails with comments, and I had three to four private meetings with citizens with concerns. And I will sit down with any citizen anytime to discuss zoning issues, almost to a fault. I enjoy doing it and having that discussion, so, you know, anyone who wants to discuss zoning, they're welcome in my office, we'll take two or three hours and discuss any issues that they have. With that, we will now move forward to some changes from, since last month. I did remove, there was discretion about what goes to planning commission, removed that statement, made it like it never happened. Did add a, did, the Board of Zoning Appeals does not have the same public information sent out as planning commission does. So there was some, I received some feedback from council members that they did want to have a more robust Board of Zoning Appeals notification process, and so I did add in that anyone requesting a variance would have a sign posted at the property like we do for planning commission. So I added that. We had discussion about the farm animals, or I'm sorry, agricultural district, talked about height of silos. I actually found in our code that silos are exempt. Church steeples, silos, other things are exempt from our height restrictions. But I did, so I still have it as sixty feet. And I've gone back and forth, if I should just remove that, yes?
Point of clarification, existing or if I wanted to build a silo tomorrow?
Build, build, if you wanted to build a silo tomorrow.
No matter what, there's no restriction?
There's no restriction. In that section with the height restrictions, the exemptions, I did state that, subject to FAA and receiving approval from the airport board.
Good, okay.
So if you want to exceed, you want to exceed, I, I wanted to protect our airport, so if you wanted, if I wanted to build a two-hundred-foot silo, you're exempt from the zoning code, but you still need to reach out to the FAA and the airport.
Okay, so I apologize, because I should know this off the top of my head, but I don't have the code, you know, memorized. So is there, you say exempt from the height restriction, however, is it still restricted on where, like what zoning classifications it can be built on?
It, it, it's subject to, I mean, churches can pretty much go on any.
Yeah.
So it's still subject to the base zoning.
Okay, so it would be like a conditional accessory structure on certain.
If it's not permitted in R1, if a silo's not permitted in R1, which it wouldn't be, you can't build it.
That's, that's what I wanted to confirm, somebody couldn't go, and like I couldn't go on my property and just build a silo today?
Correct.
Okay, thanks, you made me panic there for a second.
It's, it's subject to the base zoning and what's permitted.
Okay, thank you.
And then we had a discussion about, in agricultural district, about farm animals, and I had fifty, I am comfortable, I, I've thought, spent some time thinking about it, working it through my mind, and if we go there, I added a statement, just clarifying the grandfathered nature of it. Someone's going to say, you can just type in the number, but I can barely read the screen. So I did add the statement, farm animal operations existing before the creation of the A1 agricultural zoning district shall be considered grandfathered, any increase in the number of animals shall be required, a conditional use.
So you changed it from fifty to twenty-five?
Yeah.
Large animal.
So.
And that's not specifying large or small or anything?
No, right now it's just twenty-five animals.
And again, that's separate of the grandfathering. That was, if you come to us today, you want to designate your property as agricultural, we would, and you don't currently have an operation, we would say, okay, yes, you meet the, the restrictions and intent of the agricultural zoning, and you could have, you know, you could have less than twenty-five, but you could also have more than twenty-five.
The, the concern here, the concern is, we have a, you know, let's say we have an annexation, it's designated A1, ten years go by, and they're like, well, we want to start up a large-scale hog, hog, pig, hog operation. This is just some guardrails against that, you know, in most cases, you know, oh, I want to have, you know, thirty horses, you know, not an issue, I want to have a hundred chickens, not an issue. I view the inconvenience to the property owner of having to pay a hundred-dollar permit and come speak to the planning commission as a fair trade for kind of safeguarding the community. I think in most cases, they'll come in, if we ever have a case like this, and they show a reasonable use, it'll be yes approved. But if someone comes in and wants to do, you know, a thousand hogs, and they're right next to a subdivision, you know, there could be some real concerns there, and without this statement, we don't really have any guardrails for that. So I, I think this is.
I'm good with it.
I think it's a reasonable, a reasonable safety measure, and with the grandfathering, you know, if we, if we bring in someone that has a thousand hogs, they're, they can continue to operate.
Do we also have a separate provision, and this is blending in my head as I've read it, because like farm operations, though like a hog farm operation, wouldn't that also be considered something separate? Or that's just covered under the limitations that we're setting here for animal standards now?
Correct.
Okay.
Because we don't really have any place where farm, it's not really addressed in our code, we don't have agricultural district, and it's not really permitted.
I feel like when I have read, and maybe I've, I've read a lot of other communities, so maybe it's something I'm, my brain is recollecting from a different community, but I thought in maybe one of our industrial classifications, we had large-scale farm operations.
I thought it was maybe animal processing?
Yes, thank you, that is what I am referencing. Okay, and that would be different than a hog farm, because?
Yes.
Okay, live versus dead versus edible.
Yeah, processing, yes.
Okay.
Baloney versus hoof walking around.
Let's not talk about Wilbur.
So, so we.
Still childhood trauma.
So we added the, the clause about BZA posting a sign. We have the, the agricultural items. So others, in the M1 and M2 district, this, this last case that we just discussed had me thinking about this. And we do have M1 and M2 infill developments, and we don't, we really didn't discuss, the code really doesn't discuss infill multifamily. So I added a few statements in there. The front yard setback, where one or more lots are improved, dah 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 dah. The average, setback shall be the average depth of the front yard setback on either side of the infill lot. In this case, in the case we just discussed, the houses were fairly close to the road. But if you think of the inverse, and, and he put his further back, but let's think of the inverse, neighborhoods forty feet, you know, all the houses are about forty feet back, and the infill multifamily came in, we want them to match, we want them to be a part of the streetscape.
That's fine.
So this, this infill, we have it in the other residential districts, and I thought it was important to add to M1 and M2.
What if it's a men's lot?
Where the lot is a corner lot, it, my old man eyes, where the lot is a corner lot, the depth of the front yard shall be equal the front yard depth of the adjoining lots. So then we go around the corner. And then maximum height, primary structures shall not exceed fifty feet, that's existing, I added this statement. When in an existing residential neighborhood, the, the height shall not exceed the maximum height permitted in the surrounding neighborhood. So if you're in R1, you know, the maximum height is like thirty-five feet?
Forty feet.
Forty feet. So essentially, if you're in a neighborhood, you have to maintain the height of that, the maximum height in the neighborhood. That would not have affected this one, so I just wanted to kind of scale it down. It, it's only a difference of ten feet, but that, someone wanted a four-story. And I, in this case, you know, I think it's erring on the side of caution, they can always get a variance if, if there's a really good situation where it makes sense, they can get a variance, but I'd like to err on the side of caution and go a little more conservative. So I made those changes in both the M1. And that's pretty much the extent of changes from the last meeting.
Okay, questions, comments from the committee?
Seven, I have seven comments. You want to go blow down through mine, or you want to go as?
Yes.
Yeah, go ahead.
All right. First one is eleven twenty point oh seven.
Eleven twenty, okay, one.
Pete, can you drive?
Point oh seven, so accessory structures on my version, page forty-nine.
Okay. So we're changing the setbacks on, on these accessory structures from what they're required up above. So we're saying accessory structures, I mean, a normal setbacks are twenty-foot side yard and forty-foot rear, but these accessories are ten-foot, you know, and it's just like, I don't know, so you're going to put a, so accessory structures are barns and silos, and we're saying we can put a silo ten feet from the, I don't know, why would we, why would we change that?
So.
See, right here, here's the, the primary structure, yeah, the primary structures are, those are the setbacks, exceed forty feet, no, above grade, what is that?
So just the bottom section?
Okay, elevation, where are the set, and I was just looking at, you, we're, I don't know, we're, we're changing the setbacks for all these accessory structures, but these accessories, they're not small, there could be barns, there could be silos, and I'm not sure why you'd want a silo ten feet from the property line. I, I would just stay with the twenty and forty.
I think that's a good point, and I tend to agree with you, and, and I'm happy to make the change.
You can think about it.
Well, so, okay. I'll, I'll give you the, the background, kind of where that comes from. Traditionally, in the, in the more residential districts, you have the primary setback, which is greater, and then accessory setback, which is smaller, but in those circumstances, the accessory structures are limited in size, and so the setback being smaller makes sense, you know.
And these accessories could have odor, I mean, you could, you're right, I mean, you could.
In this case, these accessory structures will be larger in size, and so I do think that for the accessory structures, we should pretty much keep the primary structure setback.
Okay. Eleven twenty-one oh seven.
I would just say I agree with that, if we're going to, I think if we're going to make changes, since this is the version that's been public, that we should just note that the committee kind of agrees with any changes we make. So I guess, is there other comments, Eric?
I'm not a hundred percent from, like, familiar with the farm world, because I'm not from around here, but I think that all, from my experiences, all these buildings really aren't accessory structures, so we could always treat them as just primary structures with a primary setback, like you said, and just eliminate them as accessory structures on agriculture district.
So just eliminate the whole accessory structure thing?
Yeah, because I don't, I think, like, if I go to the fairgrounds, they all have their use of, a primary use of a structure, not, it's not like a house with an accessory garage or accessory shed, the barns are actually used for a primary use.
So what I think, what I'd like to do, I, I think this is a good solution, accessory structures less than a thousand square feet have the ten-foot setback, accessory, accessory structures larger than a thousand square feet have the same setbacks. larger than 1,000 square feet have the same setbacks as the property.
So a silo is less than 1,000.
I was going to say, I was going to say, like, base square footage or does that include, like, area? I would say let's keep the language as accessory structures and just hold it accountable to the same primary setbacks.
I think we have a member from the audience that wants to speak.
Not recognized. The chair does not recognize the good honorable councilman.
A technical question. Are you, do you, are you actually making changes to this? Are you making a red line copy? Because council has referred this to city planning. You're, are you making recommended changes that then count, that PNU will then can consider? Or what's, like, what's the?
I would hope so.
Yes.
We will see a red line version, in essence, of what we sent to CPC. CPC is going to send back to us a red line version with their recommended changes.
Yeah, we can do that.
Yeah. The plan would be that we would, we would provide an updated version to planning and zoning that is what you guys would then recommend to all of council.
But the changes, so in other words, you're not just going to eliminate section B there. It's going to be crossed off as a recommendation.
Correct.
Yeah, the red line.
All right. So what has been?
So on each one of them, okay, so I'm going to, I have seven comments. Are we going to like, kind of maybe vote on all seven? Is that what we were?
In essence, yes.
Okay, very good. All right.
Yep. So hearing no major objection from the committee, we would accept the recommendation to change 1120.07 accessory structures and have staff change the language to read that they would fall under the same setback requirements as 1120.04. Thank you.
Excellent.
Okay.
Where does a thousand square foot come in?
I don't think we need to.
That got nixed.
Dan shot holes through that in one second.
Sorry, Matt. Okay, my next comment is 1121.07.
1121.07.
This is height requirements on accessory structures.
All right, on page 51.
It's got an 18-foot max. And I was just challenging that. My garage is 20-foot and Grant, I bet your carriage house is taller than that. And what's nice about the, the height is you can put storage up there. You know, if you, if, at 18, you basically have a 10-foot garage height, you know, and then, and then the pitch of the roof, you know. So by more, you can put stor, mine, mine have a walk-up attic and it goes up another, I have a three-foot knee wall and then, then it goes up and it's great storage. I have a neighbor that has an office above his garage. You could put, you know, a little, oh.
Yes, Eric.
What's the address?
Well, it's on the, but, but anyway, you could just put, you know, just, you know, like a bedroom for, you know, a, you know, guest space or something like that. Now, is that not legal?
It's not, it's not allowed. And that's, that's the primary reason why the 18-foot above grade came into play, I think, back in 2012 was because there was dishonest people in the community that were, have an accessory structure with a bedroom above it for a living area.
Okay. And that's?
That's not allowed in single-family residence, no.
So one, my recollection is it's been 18 feet for the last 30 or 40 years.
Okay. How do you feel about just storage then? Can we increase height for storage? Or, you know, you want to go there?
Yeah, yeah.
Eric?
We, we've had cases where individuals have gone to the board of zoning appeals for a higher height. I think that's the proper way to handle that because at that point they can go on record and state that it is being used for storage and that if there ever is an issue in the future, that somebody is converted and the, a room above into a apartment, whenever we go to court, it holds more
Yeah.
power in court for our, our sake against that individual. So it's a safeguard, so.
And in your cases, you know, a lot of those, my, my concern is, and at times I've thought 18 feet is too high. You know, the accessory structure shouldn't physically outweigh the primary structure.
Well, I agree. We could put a limitation if we're, that in no case can it ever be taller than the primary structure.
And we've, we've really seen a, we've seen a trend of, you know, we've, we've, we see houses, you know, people wanting to put pole barns up that have twice the square feet of their homes and, you know.
Yeah.
And so we've, we addressed that a couple of years ago. I, I've been comfortable with the 18 feet. I, I'm comfortable with 18 feet.
Okay.
I don't, I don't feel, I, I have concerns about raising that and that just amassing and outdoing the primary. But a statement could be added, in no case shall the height exceed the primary.
And with our cases in the board of zoning appeals, recently we've had two that came through, but they were two different instances to where the height was requested. One was a carriage house area where everything was built, you know, 20 feet, 24 feet in height. So the applicant was granted that variance to be allowed to meet the harmony of the neighborhood. The other case wasn't as successful because it was higher than most accessory structures in that area because it was a newer area, so.
So what if I have a ranch-style home, single-story, and I choose to put a garage with storage above it and it exceeds the height of my ranch? That is not allowed right here, is it?
That is allowed, right?
It's allowed because of the 18 feet, but if we put the language, it should not exceed the height of the primary structure, that would be counterproductive, correct? I, I was just trying to follow.
Because it could be larger than the house.
I like the, I like the idea of adding a sentence that it can no longer, is that what you're getting to? You want to add that or?
No, I, somebody said it and I'm like, well, what if I wanted to put a two-story garage next, with storage next to my single-story home? Is that not allowed?
I would say that would, I don't think that would be good for the neighbor. I would, I would be against that.
It's currently allowed.
Is it? Okay.
I agree with Dan that, okay, I agree with Dan that.
Well, it's currently allowed up to 18 feet.
Accessory structure taller than a residential house than the primary structure is negatively impacts the neighborhood. Now, my question for Dan Klinger, a ranch, a ranch, single-family home, peak of the roof, is it, is it ever less than 18 feet?
It could be, you know, if you had like a 412 pitch or something possibly, I mean, but usually your pitches are a little taller than that.
Okay.
Since I've been here for eight years, I haven't had that issue where it was higher.
Well, I'm just, I want to think through those, that scenario because my neighbor put up a beautiful garage that actually has a walk-up storage above it and it, it would exceed a ranch, a traditional ranch-style, single-family home. And I would not see that to be a conflict, but.
But his house isn't, his house isn't, correct?
His house is a two-story home, so they actually, to your point, there's harmony?
That's the harmony of the built environment.
There are har, there is harmony with theirs, correct.
So based off of a quick Google search, looking at a single-story structure, the average house height is about, is between 10 to 15 feet, which if, well, we don't need the meter conversion, even though there's one level of the house, potential different ranges from the pitch of the tip, type, angle and height of the roof.
And also the depth of the building. I mean, you could have a real deep building with a 412 pitch and still exceed that.
I think if, if we have not seen a significant number of board of zoning appeals cases addressing this issue, I think keeping the language as is is currently appropriate. And then we're able to have people come forward to say, I want it, you know, 18.5 and that matches the, my house and I'm able to address it case by case. I think a blanket statement of it can't be higher than the existing property at this point might not provide as much flexibility for residents to come forward.
And I think since I've been here, it's probably about, it's less than 10, more than five, so cases.
Okay. So maybe it's not an issue then, so.
Good, great point. Yeah. So we'll leave as is then.
All right, leave as is.
Okay.
On 1135.03.
One second.
Matt, there was a conditional use as a borrow pit. We were going to take all the borrow pits out, but I think you missed one. So 1135.03.
On page 72.
What district? Do you know what district?
I don't know what the.
C2 general commercial.
Commercial. I don't want borrow pits in a commercial, do you?
That should be taken out.
It says it's a conditional use. But we'll remove it.
A little history in that, the only reason why those were in there was during the 70, I-75 project, we had nothing that said you could borrow dirt to build up that highway.
You mean the original construction of I-75?
No, the updated construction.
We didn't add borrow.
Yeah. Paul added it probably in 17 or 16.
Maybe you're right. Smells are.
That's why.
So again, it's a conditional use, but we're saying we want to remove it entirely.
Yeah, we don't want borrow pits.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay. Next one is 1156.08.
1156.
This is about terminating the windmills.
All right, page 131, alternative energy, chapter 1156. Okay, what was your question?
I always, when I, when I drive through Indiana, I look at these hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of windmills. And I'm always concerned about when that energy company goes bankrupt someday because now the energy is different and they don't pay and, you know, who's going to take these structures down? And that's, I think that's going to be a nightmare because these guys are bankrupt and we talk about, and I'm at the very last sentence, encumber the cost against the property, you know? Well, the property could be leased from a farmer and you're going to, you're going to sue the, I, you know, so I'm looking, we had this discussion before, right, and about a financial insurance to take that tower down someday. And I just think it's crazy if we don't address that because there's got to be some financial assurance that, that who pays to take that down after this company goes bankrupt, you know?
So I guess I would agree if we were just having general wind farms established. However, the way we have this structured is that it is providing a specific entity and business. And therefore, the lien on the property would be charged against the business operator. Because this is not general grid, and I'm watching you to make sure I'm not misstating anything.
That's a good differentiator.
Right. It's not like, hey, the power company is.
So now you've got Whirlpool or some, you know, and that, that property does have value, so.
Correct.
All right.
Yeah, it's not like, hey, we're just going to have a wind farm that is only benefiting that power company or the wind company that then, like in your scenario, goes bankrupt and then doesn't have any collateral to back it up. In our code, it is specific for a local user.
Okay. So what if I wanted, what if I wanted to do the opposite? If I want to put a big wind farm?
That's not permitted.
That's not permitted.
Okay, that's fine. Okay. And the reason, in the, in the solar section, there's an owner shall provide financial security, blah, 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 to secure the expense of dismantling or removing said structures. And I was going to just suggest that we had that sentence from the solar down into the windmill. But maybe it's, are we saying that's not necessary?
So you're talking on page 134 for section 1156.12, item 7, decommissioning. The applicant agrees the following conditions of the land use permit. If the applicant ceases operation of the energy project or begin, but does not complete construction of the project, the applicant shall restore the site according to a plan approved by city planning commission. If the owner is required to notify city of immediate upon secession or abandonment of the operation, at the time of issuance of the permit of the large solar energy production facility, the owner shall provide financial security in form and amount acceptable to the city of Finley to secure the expense of dismantling and removing said structures.
So does that make sense to put it in the soul, the windmill section?
So I go back, I go back and forth and actually, I had forgotten that that was in there. So the question, does it make sense to be in the solar area?
No, I'm good with it in solar.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Does it make?
Should we put it in the windmill?
Yeah. I go back and forth on this. You know, we don't, we don't make Walmart put a bond that if they go out of business and the building is dilapidated, that we need to tear it down.
See, I'm okay with your answer, Mayor, about, there is value in the property. I was more concerned about, you know, if we're renting, you know, you have some long-term lease with a farmer, you know, you're not going to go after the property, so.
Right. And, and in essence, you know, this is really the same situation because the solar power language, again, is specific to an entity.
So I will say, but I agree it does change it, but, you know, I'll try not to be, Matt's factory takes energy from a wind turbine. That wind turbine is not located on Matt's factory's property. It's located on a property owned by someone else. That's permitted and that's the situation that we generally have.
Or some LLC that's, yeah.
Yeah.
Right.
So I don't, if, if, for whatever reason, that wind turbine goes away, I don't see that Matt's factory is responsible for taking down the wind turbine.
So I think personally, oh goodness, sorry. Personally, I am comfortable with how the language is written, especially because at the state level, there's also restrictions around the decommissioning of solar power. So I think that this kind of is just mirroring that as well.
As you're going through this permitting, we just be thinking about that, who's going to pay for it when they go bankrupt? You know, like, you know, right?
Yeah.
I mean, so, okay. Maybe we're good on that one then. Leave as is.
Okay.
Okay. 1156.09, solar powered allowed in all districts. There's no restriction on, if I want to put solar panels on the front of my roof, facing the street, are we going to restrict that?
Yes, there is.
Well, you guys are not in agreement.
No, as it's written, no.
Okay.
You can't put them in the front yard.
How about on the front side of my roof?
Yes.
Currently.
Yes, what?
Currently you can.
You can do that.
You can, you can do that now.
I don't think we should be allowing that. That will look like heck on, in a neighborhood, wouldn't it?
I definitely think on the ground, yeah, you know, on the ground, yes. I don't want solar panels in my fr.
The front yard, okay.
Aesthetically, I, I see a difference in the front, on the front roof versus ground-mounted in the front yard. Ground-mounted in the front yard aesthetically, in my opinion, in my mind, and generally what I see in other communities, other communities like ours say, no ground-mounted in the front yard. So I had a discussion about this.
In Dandy Armits head, it's no roof mounted in the front, front yard.
What's that?
In my head, I don't think we should be allowing solar panel mounted on the roof in the front of a house. I think that would look terrible.
So I had, I had public conversations about this and, and someone, we, this discussion was brought up and someone did mention, you know, if you don't, you know, you're eliminating, you're potentially eliminating
Half the houses.
Houses that could have that.
Okay. I understand.
I mean, that, that's the given, that's the given, the take of the conversation. I will say, for the last at least five years, we've permitted them on the front of houses. But we haven't seen a large, you know, someday we might see a large influx of.
You might. I mean, if it gets subsidized and the, the numbers work.
You know, I know Tesla, Tesla rolled out a complete roof that was solar panels.
Now, that's different though. Actually, the Tesla roof is actually pretty nice looking.
Yeah.
So I'm going to contradict myself now. So, right, but, but there's a difference between, you know, panels mounted, that's going to look terrible.
So we do have, we do have a maximum that, that it can deviate from the pitch of the roof. So you can, you can only deviate, you can only deviate a small amount from the pitch of the roof. So you can't, your roofs.
You have a flat roof.
You can't have it, you know.
And that's in the code now? That deviation's in here?
The deviation, so you can't like go three feet high above the roof and have it a, you know, it can't, it only deviates so much from the pitch of the roof.
And the big one is glare protection. Right now, there's, it's in our code that they can't have a glare to the neighboring properties. So they do have all glare protection on them.
And I've gone back and forth on this. My, my gut feeling is with you, Dan. My, my gut feeling is with you, Dan. And then people pointed out, you know, you're eliminating a lot of people from potentially having them.
So what?
So don't, wouldn't they actually, really all we're eliminating is the, the, well, first of all, it's a, you know, it'd be permitted, but then they would be able to come to Board of Zoning Appeals and say, I'm at a hardship because the back half of my house is all covered in trees, so I can't get any sun, so I want to put them on the front, and they could be approved through Board of Zoning Appeals, correct?
Correct.
I have quite a few, there's more in the front roof than you realize in the city. It's one of my most, more popular, uh, construction, I mean, the miscellaneous construction for solar power is very popular in the past two, three years. I'm probably doing.
How do they look?
Four to five, I mean, I live across the street from one right now, in my subdivision, and I don't even notice it because it blends in with the roof. You know, if you look at it, you notice it's there, but it doesn't bother me. And we live in a highly restricted HOA area, too.
Other thoughts, comments on this? Are we comfortable with as is? Are we wanting to change it, so you would have to get a variance to be able to have it on the front?
I'm still in the no, but I'm only one vote, so.
Yeah.
Mr. Russell, your opinion?
You know, I, I go back, I, I agree, I definitely hear your concern. I know we talked about this significantly when we were even, you know, kind of revisiting this. It is interesting, because obviously it's been in the code permitting them for quite a while already. We're obviously in a changing, I don't want to use the word environment, though, you know, because I'm talking about not the, anyways. So, I guess I would be comfortable with changing it to allow just for back mounting, and then, you know, we're able to reevaluate the code, and if we see a ton of variances coming in and it makes sense for it to be a community-wide thing, then I think we could open it up, but at least that gives us a little more flexibility to, to have a say, that somebody doesn't come in and put a monstrosity on the front of their roof in a neighborhood.
Do we get many complaints about this type of thing right now?
No. Well, what I can do is I can get a list generated for like the past five years, as best as we can, of properties before we make the, um, code edit, and give you a list of properties, and you can actually drive around and see ones that may be in the front yard. I know there's a couple down in the old neighborhoods, like Hancock, Washington area, that is, in the past two years.
You mean in the front of the roof, not the front yard?
Yeah, yeah, not in the front yard.
Thank you for the clarification.
And there are, you know, it can't extend past, you know, it can't hang over the roof. And we've got, the, the pitch has to be, can only deviate a little bit from the pitch of the roof, so, you know, those do help minimize kind of a worst-case scenario that I put in my mind, you know?
Eric, can anyone put like those sun trackers where it's, they're moving as the sun travels? Is that, or, because that would change the pitch to your.
Yeah, they don't, they don't move at all, they're pretty.
They're all stationary.
Stationary and flat to the roof.
Should, and this is just another thought, and maybe we hear from Eric and go out and visit a couple of those locations. The other thing is maybe in the mounting section, we say, wherever possible, it should be placed on the backside of the prop, you know? And then, you know, so it's kind of like, that's the preference, right? I don't know if we could add some language in eleven fifty-six point one-two, section A, accessory solar systems, item one, mounting, and just among those three bullets, make a note that the preference is that it be on the back roof.
Yeah, because the packets that we do get from those solar companies are really in-depth, so they do have, I think, that kind of imagery where the sun's facing.
Okay, enough on that one?
Any other comments? All right, Dan, chug along.
Uh, eleven sixty-one oh one point one.
Eleven sixty-one oh one.
Point one. Talks about gazebos, decks, hot tubs, enclosures, I would just add saunas to that, only because my nephew just built a big sauna and it's kind of, I don't know if you want to add that.
All right, I'm sorry, tell me one more time.
On eleven sixty-one oh one point one, it talks about accessory structures.
Okay, thank you. So under item A two, gazebos, decks, hot tubs, and saunas.
Saunas, yeah. If you want, just another thought, I guess, okay, and then lastly.
Is everybody cool with that addition? Okay, I, I figure you guys will yell at me if you disagree on something. That seems reasonable, all right? Grant, would you like to comment on saunas?
No, but can you just roll down to eleven sixty-one point one-one point three D?
So eleven sixty-one point oh one point one.
Eleven sixty-one point one-one.
Okay, yeah, one second. Eleven sixty-one.
That's oh two, keep going down.
One-one.
You're going way down.
Okay, maybe, okay, forget it, I thought we were, we were close.
You're in parking standards?
All right, so page one sixty-six, eleven sixty-one point one-one, and then what would you like?
Three. And then D.
Three D, expansion of legally conforming parking areas? Is that what you're wanting to reference?
This is point one, don't we want point three?
Okay, so you're looking at parking for M one and M two multifamily, and then setbacks.
Yeah, this exclusion was.
Page one sixty-nine. Okay.
This exclusion really only applies to visitor parking spaces, so I'm not sure why it has its own, why it has it. Like, just the way this is written is kind of, is kind of confusing, because you have D, an exclusion, and it's only about visitor parking spaces, it really only reflects, uh, part C above it. It's, it's really just an extension of, of what you're talking about in, in C, it shouldn't be its own subsection. So just make it part of, just, just combine it with, with visitor parking spaces, because that's the only thing it talks about.
So you would like to see item D under eleven sixty-one point one-one point three exclusions, and just combine it with item C related to visitor parking spaces?
C one and C two, and then E will become D.
And then, and then for all, all of the parking, you know, we have eleven sixty-one point one-one, and then we have items two, three, and five, and, and it's like, what's, what's the difference? We, we're, but, but then, Matt and I also taught, as he had mentioned during the earlier part of the meeting, that we had talked about really an examination of parking in some more depth after, as maybe a twenty-twenty-four thing, because nothing says the new year like looking at parking. And so maybe we, maybe that, maybe some of this stuff is just a, a push to further year, to next year.
Yeah, I mean, happy to make that one change, but I, I do think, like you said, an examination of the parking is a, a future bullet point.
All right, my last comment then is eleven sixty-one point one-five.
Point one.
Okay. One-five. All right, so you said eleven sixty-one point one-five.
Point one.
Okay, so general standards? A, approval expiration revoked, revocation.
Yeah, one.
Okay.
It's point, okay, point one-five, point one A, approval, okay, go down just a little further. Oh, at the very bottom. Well, I can't, anyway, it was talking about approved conditional use is for a period of one year. Is that right? So when we, like, today, like, if we do a drive-through and we approve a conditional use, is it expires in one year?
Only if they don't make progress in implementing it, that's what that's saying. So, for example, if we give you a conditional use for the ladies that were here earlier, if they don't comply within one year, they have to come back. So a couple of years ago, remember, we had a.
Let's go to where that's written in, I'm sorry, I can't, okay, where is it? This right here?
Yes.
Approved condition for a period of, okay, use will be for a period of one year, provided substantial progress and completion is made. Okay.
Yeah, that's definitely. Implementation, this could be a building, but it, it, you can't get, you can't get the conditional, the conditional uses we granted today, you can't wait five years.
Yeah.
And do it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Does that match up with our City Planning Commission, is that where that statement came from? Because it's a year to establish the approval for a site plan, is that basically the same thing?
So, just the conditional uses, we used to have a laundry list of things, beehives, it is, it was kind of the junk drawer of our code, beehives, whatever, and they would have these arbitrary conditions of the conditional use, not arbitrary, but a list of conditions. You had beehives, had to be fifty feet from whatever, can't be one hundred feet from here, et cetera, et cetera. But it's a conditional use, and so our attorney and myself, we did not oftentimes, so the situation is, they meet the two conditions that we listed in the conditional use. But what if, what, you know, it was a gray area, but what if the planning commission has additional conditions? And he recommended, he said, ours was somewhat unusual in that we listed each of these uses, conditions for those conditional uses, where really, he's like, you just rely on the seven general standards of a conditional use. Does it harm your neighbors? Is it harmonious with the neighborhood? And so you view all conditional uses through that lens of, you read those seven criteria, which are applied to any type of project, and base it upon that. So, um, so Jeff Stoppard, you know, we, we removed all that old clutter, and he set up this section. He's very knowledgeable about conditional uses, and this is, this is what he's all for.
So I think, Matt, where some of the confusion comes is by opening with that statement, it, it makes it appear as if the permit, the conditional use itself only applies for a year, and then you have to get it renewed. When you look, though, at the other items, where it talks about, a conditional use permit shall automatically expire if the conditional use ceases operation, or item four, a conditional use permit shall be valid and run with the land, provided substantial progress and completion is made, only for the specific use and location approved in accordance with any conditions approved. Perhaps it would make more sense to move item one under item four, and then clarify the language to say something along the lines, if, you know, if substantial, if substantial progress and completion has not occurred, the applicant has one year to comply before the, the conditional use permit is invalid. And then you go into the ex, the extension language, because I think that that would clarify that it's.
That's what you're saying, yeah.
Does that better clarify?
I like that.
Councilman Russell? Okay. Oh, that's always scary, no, I'm just kidding. But I, I think that that would just clarify, because when you, oh, I think everybody understands, so if we can modify that, that'd be great. Great question, thank you.
Those are my comments.
All very good comments, and I do appreciate them.
Yeah, yeah. Any other items from the group? I know we've been, we've talked about this multiple times, I want to just give a shout out, I know we're not done by any means with this process, but Jacob, Matt, Eric, you guys have had numerous meetings with me over the last three years to even get it to this point on things we wanted to see updated, and how we wanted to make sure that we're staying ahead of the ballgame and addressing some of these issues, and making sure that we have good policy in place for our community's development. So I really appreciate the work you guys have been doing, and look forward to moving this forward more. Other comments?
Just the, you know, zoning codes are kind of a living document, and, you know, if, if citizens were, you know, why are we changing things? It's very common to keep, you know, getting feedback from the community, seeing what permits are being denied or approved, and, and changing things, and, you know, in the future. And so, this, a total rewrite, not a total rewrite, but we went through this in two thousand seventeen, and it was time to do it again, and here we are.
Perfect. All right, hearing, well, I guess I would just make a motion that City Planning Commission would move this version with our edits from today forward to Planning and Zoning Committee. Do I have a second? All right, we have a motion and a second. Jacob, whenever you're ready.
Mr. Clear?
Aye.
Mayor Mearon?
Aye.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Mr. Diarmuid?
Aye.
And Ms. Schröder?
Aye.
Lovely. All right, seeing no further business, this meeting of the City Planning Commission is adjourned, thank you all.
Thank you.